We have a packed agenda tonight, so if I could get started, and I would ask you to rise. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education on Tuesday, January 15th, and I'll call the roll. Mrs. Cannelli is present, Mr. Convetito, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacano, Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Carey was here and he'll be here with us shortly, and Mrs. Brand. So we're all present almost. We do have a full agenda tonight, so I would ask especially board members if we can be as concise and direct with our comments and questions that will allow us to get through the whole agenda if we can. We have a couple of major presentations, a small presentation on the budget, as well as other issues that we're going to be dealing with, and so if we can get started, that would be good. We did just finish an executive session on school security matters. As you can imagine, those are issues that not only are covered under the Freedom of Information Act, but are appropriate to discuss in executive session. This board, as well as your staff, as well as the First Selectman's Office, the Police Department, the Fire Department, are all taking this issue very seriously and will be addressing things as they come up. I don't want people to think that because you didn't hear it in public, that things aren't happening. So with that having said, our first presentation is on food services.
I'd like to invite John Tureen to come up. He's been working with us, and you can have your choice of spots. If you like the podium, we'll take that. To set this up, you might remember last spring when we were discussing food service, one of the goals of the program was to hire a consultant to help us with our meals and our food service program, and after interviewing several individuals, John was provided, was hired to provide these services to our school system, and so we thought it would be prudent for the board to get an update on his work to date and plans for the remainder of the year. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Title. Can everybody hear me okay? Normally I scream loud enough, I don't need a microphone, but I really want to just give a quick overview of where we are, what we're doing, and where we hope to go in regards to the nutrition services. And there was a handout in the materials that summarized, it's kind of a front and back page, that covers the broad picture a little bit more, but I'll talk briefly on that. And I guess the best way to introduce myself is that I'm a cook, and I say that with a lot of pride and seriousness, that I think it's an important occupation to be able to give, but from oneself, for the well-being and the wellness of others, and I'm honored to do that. And I'm also honored, and I think I'm blessed to be also, I call myself a bridge builder. And the reason I do that is that I think I try to connect or build a bridge between the way things sometimes have been done a long time in institutional food service and where we can possibly go, and I've tried to bridge that gap. But I do it in a way that, or I try to focus that supports the infrastructure and the pieces and the players that are in a particular institution. In this case, we're talking Fairfield Public Schools. So back in August, I had the opportunity to meet with a lead group of representing the nutrition services that had kind of tasked me with the opportunity to address four goals. And to give you a quick summary of what they were was to provide, help us continue to provide better food, help us to train staff to continue to providing better food, improve communication between the nutrition services and the customers. When we talk about customers, we're talking about the children that are eating the food, the kids that are eating the food, and the parents. So improve that communication. And the fourth task was to improve participation. And that, for me, the goals three and four kind of go one in the same, and I'll explain that, you know, what I mean by that. So for the first goal, provide, it was to say, to provide tastier, quality, more nutritious meals. I have to say, I've had the opportunity and the honor to work in a lot of school systems and a lot of institutions throughout the country, and what, some of the steps that had begun to be taking place here in Fairfield were indeed ahead of the curve of what a lot of schools have actually been doing. How that was taking place, I know there's been a lot of passion, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people involved with the food program, dietary program here in Fairfield, both from the producer end, and I know there's some, I can't find, there's some of the folks over here. There's some really good skilled, passionate chefs and cooks and managers here already, and there's also some very skilled and passionate customers here in Fairfield with the parents and the students as well. So what we decided to do was to take what you've already been doing and raise it to another level and start focusing more on scratch cooking. So we addressed creating a criteria for more meals cooked from scratch. The national USDA standards, which we all have to abide by, and there's not enough time in the night to go over the details of what those mean, but those standards have to be adhered to. They were raised this school year, taking effect in July, so that we had to make sure every change that we made adhered to those guidelines with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, which we've done. And then the other thing we're really excited to be, just beginning to work on now, is creating a specification document or kind of a guidelines, a line in the sand, here's what our minimum expectations are when it comes to things like no pink slime in our ground beef, you know, organic yogurt only. So, you know, we're going to set these standards and put it out so it's a roadmap for all of us to be able to work by. So we're working on those. We're also trying to get out of, I'm really pushing to get rid of any processed food whatsoever.
Sir, one of the awkward things is that you're addressing the Board of Education, and while the public is listening, you might want to try and balance your sightlines.
I will, thank you. All right. Thanks for letting me know. So some of the processed foods, we're looking to get away from and create more of a cook from scratch. And an example would be, there's a thing called Smiley Fries on the menu, which we're, I'm working to see if we can start to serve less of that and serve more of a thing we've put on the menu called a Spicy Fat Fry, which is just an Idaho potato seasoned with some really, cut into wedges and seasoned with some really good, simple spices, low on salt, high on flavor, and baking those at a high heat and serving those, and really pumping them up, and that comes with a communication piece too. So we're getting less processed, more cooked from scratch. Also, really working on samples, especially in the elementary schools. Today, I happen to be in Osborne Hills School, and when I'm in the schools, I get to where I'm actually in my Chef White's, working the crowd, working with the kids, and we did a quesadilla, but we took it to a new level, and we did a broccoli pesto with tomato quesadilla with salsa inside, and really got the kids to try it, but we didn't call it a broccoli quesadilla. We called it, you know, a quesadilla with vegetable pesto, and they couldn't see the broccoli. I had one kid, one third grader over at Osborne Hills, said, "You mean to tell me there's broccoli in here?" And I said, "Yeah." He says, "Oh, my God, that's awesome." He said, "That's really awesome." So under the tastier, the foods, we've worked in a lot of new recipes, we've got, there's a lot more I think that we can start to put in, but we're beginning to work on that. The second goal was the staff training. We've done a boot camp where we worked with the staff, and we did it in the high school over at, I want to say it was, I think it was in Ward High School. And we've also done two pilot schools where I spent a week in each, in a middle school and an elementary school, McKinley Elementary and Ludlow, Roger Ludlow Middle School, where we really get out, and I spend a lot of time, not just with the staff, but out in the dining rooms. And then we've set up a schedule for January and February for me to get into each and every one of the elementary schools. And that, you know, that would be to focus and really work on the third goal, and that's the communication piece. One of the pieces with that is to really get out, as I mentioned, into the cafeterias and get the kids fired up, you know, and understand that this is what we're doing and why we're doing this, and really kind of explain to them, you know what, it's cool to eat good food. And when a chef is out there telling them, you know, some of them getting pretty excited as well. In a couple of the objectives and tasks that we've been putting into, working on the communication, we've created a lead team of stakeholders. It's a small in numbers, but well represented, with parents, with administration, with some faculty, and with some food service managers as well, which we're hoping to get convened very, very soon. I've also met with some of the student councils. Other means of communication, we created a formal letter that went home to all parents explaining this project, that was emailed out, that came from the Director of Food Services Office from here, from Joanne Fitzpatrick. We also created a newsletter explaining this and trying to let people know, that was, and I think there was a copy in today's handout as well, tonight's handout. We're planning to do two parent-student cooking classes, lectures in a couple of the schools some evenings, a couple of evenings where I want to team up with some of the talented cooks and managers you have here to work on those. And then just this week, we had created and released a press release about the work that we're doing here, and we're really hoping that we start to get some media attention to this, because it's one thing to do that, make the changes behind the scenes, but we want people to know about it. You know, there's a lot of parents that are still saying, "I wish I had known," and we want to know. So we really need help, and we're hoping that this press release will get the message out there as well. So we went through that process. That should in turn, if we can do this, if we can get, build the communication piece to get the kids to realize what's going on, they go home, I mean, I told kids on Friday, when you go home today, tell your parents that the chef was here and he gave, he made us chips, but tell them that they were kale chips, and that you loved them. And the kids were eating, they ate us out over at North Stratfield School on Friday. They just ate us all out of kale chips. Kale! You know, I mean, it's, I mean, that's a story in itself. So if we can get the, if we succeed in increasing and growing communication, the objective is, we want to start to measure increased participation, which is food services a business. We need to sell lunches and meals. We need to get the parents, and as I walk around, the 50% or higher of the students that are bringing their lunches in to school, we need to have less of them, if we can, bring the lunches in, feel confident and comfortable to get their students to buy a lunch, to, you know, to participate in the lunch program with some of these new recipes that our chefs and cooks are preparing here. So that's, you know, that's where we are in a nutshell going forward. There's more schools that I'm going to be working within, there's more recipes we want to get out, more training, and as I mentioned, there's definitely a couple of workshops with parents and students that we want to work on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was told that you probably would get all of you that you wanted to cover in 10 minutes, and you made it in about 11, so congratulations. We have comments from the board members. Mr. Lou.
Thank you, thank you very much. I've known John Tureen for a while. The guy's amazing, and I am so happy that this administration has decided to bring you in and is working hard to get our food services up to the next level. It's very, very exciting. I've had the kale chips. I asked for my birthday for a dehydrator because I love them so much that I make them at home now, they are amazing. And in fact, I was at Stratfield PTA the other night, and I was, by coincidence, happened to see a presentation that one of the Flip parents did, and I wish that slideshow was here tonight, but to tell this board and the public that the things that they're serving and the things that they're getting the kids to buy into is so amazing and so exciting, and I think even parents there that night that were slightly skeptical about some of the foods that are, you know, healthy foods and raw foods that are being presented, were also turned around by this presentation that we saw the other night. So I'm very, very excited about this. I would like to ask a few questions, and I'm wondering, Dr. Title, is there, is either Ms. Monsell or Ms. Fitzpatrick's here tonight?
Ms. Monsell is here, Ms. Fitzpatrick is not.
You know, one of my concerns is that we've spent excellent money doing this program that comes out of the food budget, so I know it's not affecting our actual budget, but still money. And I want to make sure that this isn't just something that is here today and sort of fades away. And I guess one, a couple of my questions have to do with the long-range plan of facilitating what, you know, Mr. Tureen is bringing to food. And I guess I was upset to see that Trix Yogurt was back on the menu again, but is that, is it back off again?
It's back off again.
All right. But I guess my question being is that if we are spending this money and we're taking this time to make this effort, what is there in terms of protocols or whatever through food services, through, to make sure that we're not going to keep hitting these little bumps and going backwards, but that we're trying to improve upon what we're doing?
John mentioned the specifications that we're working on, and he mentioned the organic yogurt. That's the kind of thing that we'll take care of, you know, here's our minimum standard, this is what our expectations are, and it's in writing, it would be, it will be in writing, where, you know, everyone knows what our expectations are, and we can only get better than that.
I guess then my question is sort of, I mean, everybody makes mistakes and things happen, but is there some kind of overriding, I don't know who's necessarily in charge to make sure that these things are being kept online to build, but if something like this were to happen again, how do we, how do we make sure that this doesn't happen again?
I think this, these guidelines that we're working on should take care of that.
Okay. And I think the other-
Do you have a second question?
Yes, I do. The other question was about communication. I mean, the communication is so, so vital, and I think it's a great step in what I'm seeing, though I, for one, I'm not sure about the rest of this board. I didn't get the January newsletter, and when I even went to the website, I couldn't find the January newsletter. And so I just want to help, again, say that I am so excited that we have this program. But if the program doesn't have the found, you know, the backup that it needs and the consistency, then I'm afraid that the program could fail, and I would not like to see that happen. So thank you for getting it going, thank you for bringing Mr. Tureen in. Let's really try to stick to this plan and keep it tight, because I do think we can be a school that people and other districts look up to.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Iacano.
Thank you for all your work, thank you for your communication, because I did get the January newsletter, and I have a seven-year-old who came home and told me I tried something new today, and I said, "Really, what?" And I had no idea what he was going to be talking about, and he said, "A cheese quesadilla." Didn't mention anything about broccoli, but he is one of the better eaters in the house, so it worked on him. Thank you. What I want to know, and I've been supportive of the healthy food program and getting involved and moving in that direction, however, I don't like the government regulation involved in it and their hand in everything. I tend to think that they muck things up in that regard, and we can do better, that's long been my argument, that we as a district can do better than what even the government has put together. But the reason why I've been supportive of participating in that program is because we had no infrastructure to get us to that healthy eating. This stuff is fantastic, the fact that you're cooking from scratch and the ingredients that you're using, and I now feel like we are really heading in the right direction. When can you get us off, when do you think we'll be ready to go on our own food service program, where we're cooking from scratch and we can serve and we are not limited by what the government is doing? I ask that question because one of the things you're driving at is increased participation. And the biggest complaint I'm hearing overwhelmingly because of the federal programs that have come through, hasn't been about the quality of the food, it's been about the quantity of the food, and the kids at the high school are starving. And that's one of the reasons why they're not participating in the program. I'm not sure about the younger children, but the older kids are hungry, especially our athletes. They cannot sustain themselves on an 800-calorie diet, so they're bringing in their own food. So I feel like we're losing participation in that regard. If we can get us off somebody else's dole, do this the right way, and feed our kids, how far away from that are we?
Well, I don't want to speak for your food service department on behalf of them, but when it comes to the USDA lunch program, to get off of it, the trade-off is relinquishing the revenue that comes with that. So if you make, if you're on that program and you meet the guidelines, which you guys have done, you are reimbursed X amount of dollars on the meal that you're served, so that you can count that towards revenue. So to go away from that, you would need to offset and increase your participation incrementally to be able to sustain or exceed what that revenue that you would have sacrificed was.
I fully understand that. That's what I'm looking for you to do for us.
To crunch the numbers and-
No, to get everybody to want to participate. So when we crunch the numbers, it'll work that way.
Okay. Well, we'll have to-
They didn't tell you that goal.
No.
That's for tomorrow, the next day there'll be another goal.
Okay. No, I mean, I think you'd be talking about some radical changes to your menus then, to be able to say, "We're not going to worry about that." But we need to really tie in the customers to understand, you know, potentially what we're going to, what kind of a risk we're going to be looking at for increasing that participation in sales, so that, on the one hand, we're adhering to the healthy cook-from-scratch type of menus, and on the other hand, that many people are also buying in at levels that are far exceeding what you are right now. There are not many districts out there that do not, that have taken that kind of a risk.
So you see that's going to be really hard to get away from.
I think you can do it, well, I mean, you've got to, we've got to address the quantity piece, you know, in the high schools, I won't argue with you, that piece to it, but-
Do you see the federal government changing that?
Yes.
You do?
I think, I think there've also been a few, they've already made a couple since in the four months that schools have been open nationally, they've made a few tweaks to it because of challenges that the customers, that the school districts have been having. So that potentially could happen. I'd look at trying to continue to adhere to that, then going off on that, a district this size going off, going off that kind of resource.
So lobbying changes in the regulations.
I'm sorry?
Lobbying changes in the regulations.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Convetito and then Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, well, thank you for your efforts in this, and thank you for, you know, the grassroots program that actually started this up in this district. We constantly talk about increased participation and increased communication. Since this program went into effect in the district, there's been a tremendous frustration on the club within the schools about bake sales and what they can and can't do. Ludlow, I think, has a perch that used to serve muffins and things in the morning, and at the two high schools, there are two culinary arts programs. To me, it seems to be a no-brainer to get them involved, stakeholders in this, is what they can't sell and what they can't sell, and, you know, get some culinary arts kids in there and have them cook a recipe from scratch and present it at lunch as theirs, and I think you'd get a great deal more participation, because it's coming from the kids to their schoolmates. And if we can get those clubs involved and those, you know, like the perch at Ludlow, I assume Ward has a sister program to it, I think we'd get much more buy-in, because the kids are putting it out there and saying, "Hey, come try this." And so I'd like to see that as part of this effort to increase the participation.
That's a great point. There has been a couple of conversations with the culinary arts faculty or teacher, and I will follow up on that. It's a great idea.
Mrs. Brand.
First of all, thank you. Your reputation preceded you, it was amazing, and you haven't let us down. So I'm thrilled.
Thanks.
You're welcome. The other thing, I understand a lot of the children, particularly the kids who are in high school, some of them also in middle school, their calorie requirements are higher, they are growing, and I think that's the issue that we have, because we have a standard that's looking at not really the individual child, and I shouldn't say child, but the age groups that we're actually delivering food to. And I think there should be a compensation for that, because they actually require a heck of a lot more calories, and they learn it very quickly. They're starving, they come home, first thing they do is look for food, and then they get a little older and realize that they can't eat the same way they thought they could when they were 15 and 16. So, but the lessons that you're teaching now are life lessons, and I think they're invaluable, so I can't thank you enough.
Last comment?
Just very quickly, and the one comment that we're hearing a lot here about is about the high schools, and yet that's the one place you did not mention you'd be visiting. Is that true?
As it stands right now, we may try to do the cooking classes lectures in the high schools and/or the middle schools that we haven't gotten into. We have to sit down and talk about the rest of the project going out this semester and determine if we can indeed, you know, find a way to get into those. One of the strategies to really be sure we focused on the elementary schools, I'll be honest, was, no offense, are you guys in high school? Yet. And I've got a 16-year-old junior at Sheehan High School, and my son in Wallingford, but some of the habits are, you've created, you've instilled them, whereas in the elementary school, if we can really get them to buy in now, they're going to be tomorrow's middle schoolers, and then the day after, the year after is high schoolers. So with the amount of time and energy we have to put into this project, that was the focus, with hopefully the chance to do some classes in the high schools. And I will follow up on Mr. Coveridi's suggestion about that's where the culinary arts, and that's near and dear to my heart.
And just to follow up is that I agree with Ms. Iacano about hoping to increase the participation, although I have to admit, my goal with increasing the participation is not to get away from the federal funding, but to make sure we control the prices of the foods. So I certainly support all the work to increase the participation in this.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, Board, for the questions. Thank you for the parents who are advocates, passionate that they are, in support of you, and to our staff.
Yeah, and the staff, definitely.
You're pointing in that direction, so if you're not staying for the budget, but there are chairs up front if you wish to stay for the budget. Our next presentation is the presentation of the superintendent's recommended 2013-2014 operating budget. There's a distribution of books that requires some instruction, I am told.
Well, we're going to try to do this in an orderly fashion. We have a lot of books to distribute to some of you out there, so we-
The vault?
The vault. It's in the vault. So we have signs. If you're a town official, there's a sign that says "Town officials." PTA over here, the board will just give them to you. Building administrators who are here, I know a lot of the staff are here. So why don't we take a minute to distribute those, and if you get one early, start by reading the letter at the front.
If you're a regular board and a visiting-
Okay. Here we go. Here we go.
So I presume everybody has the book that has their name on it, and I'll now turn it over to Dr. Tidal to present the Board of Ed budget.
Okay, thank you. For people at home, or people here who don't have a copy of this, by noon tomorrow, this budget will be online on the Fairfield Schools website. It's always a challenge to try to put together a budget in a high-performing district, a very well-regarded district, that continues and improves what we have, and at the same time does everything we can to try to keep the increase as low as possible. Unfortunately, this year, we had one overriding factor in this budget that is basically the budget driver. And all you need to do is look on page 15 in the executive summary, if you haven't read the letter where it's written out, and look at the 2013-14 budget drivers to see that of the increase that we're asking for, 4.86%, 3.65% of that, fully three-quarters of the budget increase, is in one line item, health insurance. And I think the Board and members of the public got the preview of this coming attraction at our last meeting, and you saw what a difficult year we had in that regard, and you kind of had a preview of what the impact would be. And I chose actually the least impactful of the two legitimate options that we had before us for budgeting health insurance, if you recall, were to budget for a higher reserve, a double reserve, but a lower trend, if you remember this, versus the lower reserve, the one-time reserve, and the slightly higher trend, the 9.2%. So I chose B. All right? The difference between those two was about $800,000. So if you wanted to do A, you'd have to add to this. Okay? And while I didn't get approval from anybody, because I didn't ask for approval, I did alert the selectmen, for selectmen, and the chairman of the Board of Finance, that that's how I intended to present the budget to the Board. Now, you may want to do it differently, but just so you know, after we had that long discussion at the last meeting, I chose the one that actually had the lower impact on the budget. When you couple that with pension, which adds another 0.38%, and this is pension for our non-certified employees, because you know all our certified employees are in the state pension plan, those two combined are 4.03% of the 4.86. Everything else in this budget is under a percentage point. That's salaries, that's transportation, that's books, that's everything else, tuition. So that's really, in my view, the story of the budget this year, that these increases in health insurance. And so my strategy was to do everything we could to try to control the rest of the budget, whatever we could control. Staffing-wise, our enrollment is scheduled to go up by a net of about 100 more students. The shift is mainly to the high school level, as we know. Elementary enrollment is not projected to go up or down for next year, but by a quirk of the way the kids fall, we are able to reduce staff there and shift them to the high school. So you'll see a reduction in elementary staff, an increase in high school staff. Middle school, not a lot of changes, but you'll see shifting in staff at the middle schools to account for the fact that now Fairfield Woods will be on par, or maybe even a larger school than Roger Ludlow Middle School. So you'll see shifts between the middle schools, but not a lot of change there. So the net on the certified staff is basically flat. They're not, the net on that is basically zero. This maintains all the class sizes within the Board's guidelines, as always. There's no change in that, elementary and the middle school and high school within the contracts, so we're preserving and maintaining our class sizes, but the certified staff has been held basically flat. I did resist, and I have to tell you, that I am very wary of our having to implement a new teacher and administrator evaluation system next year, which is currently the mandate, because I don't know right now what the impact would be on staff to carry that system out. I don't have anybody in here to help with that, and I'm going to cross my fingers that the state comes to its senses and says, "You can phase that in, or you can do it over time." But I am worried about that, and I think down the road, we are going to have to address our capacity to do the new mandates. Even the minimum mandates in the new teacher evaluation system are way beyond what we're doing now. I do have costs in here for acquisition of software and training in preparation for this, and we have gotten some figures from the state on what that ought to be. So you'll see some costs around that, but there's no additional staff in there to handle the new teacher evaluation system. We have increased our projected retirements. I get that question all the time, so I'm telling you right now what I did. We typically had budgeted 10 to 12 retirements, and the numbers have been coming in higher. I've budgeted for 16 retirements on the certified staff. That's about the five-year average. It was very difficult to see my way to go in and add a lot here, obviously, with the big impact of our fixed costs. We did review the cuts that were made two years ago to see what the impact has been of those on the school system, and obviously, we took a significant hit two years ago, and we're, you know, not in a position to bring much of that back. One thing I will say that I did, that I believe is, very low cost and very high impact, is I'm very concerned about the impact of the high school libraries not being open after hours, and the high school computer labs not having any staffing. And so there's about a $23,000 figure in here for part-time coverage for the afternoon in the libraries and the computer labs. It won't give us full coverage in the computer labs, but it's a step in the right direction as we analyze this with the high school headmasters, really felt this was having a very detrimental effect on students, and that for a relatively modest cost, I've added that back in. That is the only thing that is in there. There is an increase, you know, rolling out another phase of our gifted program at the middle school that will involve students having the option to be pulled from their unified arts classes to go to a separate gifted program. As you know, that was part of our plan. It does require a 0.2 increase at each middle school. To accomplish that, that is in here. I did not make a recommendation to restore the world language program for two reasons. One is costs, obviously, and the second is that we are finding that the additional language arts instructional time that we are getting out of that is beneficial. So in fact, the trade-off there, while it is detrimental, obviously, in world language, we believe, the principals and our staff believe that there's a significant benefit to the additional language arts time that we're getting, and the world language is not back in the budget. And there's no other cuts from the June 2011 reductions restored here. There are some changes we'll see in where staff are charged from different accounts. They used to be charged to schools, and now they're in district accounts, you'll be able to follow that. Another assumption I've made in here, and this again may be too aggressive, I'm assuming that our state and federal revenue will remain flat. By most accounts, that would be an optimistic projection, given where the federal government is now. The deal on the fiscal cliff did not resolve the issue of sequestration, of cutting federal funds. Had the fiscal cliff occurred, our loss in revenue would have been in the north of $200,000. Congress has not made a decision on that, but we are assuming flat federal grants. That's mainly the Title I grant and the IDEA grants. So if that turns out to be a cut to us going forward, then that will be problematic. At the state level, again, we never know what the state's going to do, because they don't do their budget till June. We're assuming a flat state grant as well. Of course, the biggest one doesn't go to us, but goes to the town, the ECS grant. That's been held harmless for a number of years. The big question there is always, what are they going to do with excess cost? Again, we assumed it to be pretty close to flat excess cost, it's funded at 75% right now. Transportation, after all was said and done, with the transportation contract, eliminating the grandfathering and so forth, really, the transportation account really didn't move around very much, not materially. The new contract is more expensive, we believe, than the old contract, but we're absorbing all those costs, because we aren't running as many runs because of the middle school situation. We do have to absorb some new costs in transportation due to magnet schools. In Bridgeport, where they had been subsidizing those magnet schools, now we have to pick up the bill for that, and our special education transportation costs are also rising. So the net of all that is, you won't see a lot of movement in the transportation contract, but obviously, had we not had grandfathering, that would have been going, that would have been going up. I did not add, and it happened sort of at the end as we were putting this together, there's no specific dollar amount in this budget specifically on school security. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is that the actions we're taking this year with respect to putting buzzers and cameras and so forth on the exterior of schools, that's all coming out of the current year budget. So we don't have to worry about, will that survive next year's budget for school security? So we're doing that this year. If there needs to be a big infrastructure investment, right now, we're working with the police to work on a project for our school district and identify perhaps some infrastructure improvements. That would then need to go forward as a capital project. We couldn't possibly absorb that in the operating budget, so, you know, more medium or longer term, we are still working on that. And if additional police personnel are going to be put in the schools, and again, that's still up in the air, that would be a police department budget, not Board of Ed budget. And again, we would work jointly on that, but that's why you won't see it in there. We do have a security account, and we can still do some things, but there's nothing specifically earmarked for that. I did try to respond, this is nearly to the Board, to some of your suggestions about the book. I couldn't respond to all of them. I did my best, but we have an enhanced table of contents, which I hope will make it easier for everybody to find things. The budget drivers on the bottom of page 15 is a new item. We did put in on pages 108 and 109, the budget history for the last four years, what the Board has requested and what the town has appropriated, and the per pupil expenditure comparison, Fairfield's per pupil expenditure compared to Fairfield County and our DRG, that's in there. And we have an expanded page, on page 138, of our program implementation and text and materials accounts, to sort of lay that out by department. There have always been questions about, you know, the professional development, curriculum development, text and materials, and that's laid out in a chart in there. So that's just some of the improvements. The book itself, the last two years is one honorable mention, second place in the state for educational communication excellence in educational communications. Mrs. Moncel is, all credit to her on that and her staff. I know over the last couple of years, we've got a lot of compliments on the communication, the clarity of this budget. We've really kept it very similar to what people have seen before. Many of the charts will look familiar to you. On the other hand, you know, really what's important is the substance of it, not necessarily the presentation, but they do go hand in hand. So that's where I am with this right now. And at this point, I'll turn it back over to the chairman, how he wants to proceed from here.
Just to give the Board an indication of where we're going from here, one is, I think we have time for some conversation on the health insurance line tonight, for those who want to finish the conversation that they maybe started in the December meeting. That issue is also in the 200 series, so in one sense, there'll be a third bite at that apple as well when we talk on Tuesday. What I'd like to suggest is that on Tuesday at our budget hearing, if we could focus on the questions related to the income side, and then start through the series, 100 series, 200 series, and hopefully get to the 300 series by the end of the night, income 100, 200, 300. And then on Thursday, if we could pick up at the 400 series and finish the rest of the book, then that would leave us Tuesday for circling back to questions that maybe you had asked for additional information on, and the central office had to do some research and get that information back to you. I would also like to, on Thursday, ask if Board members are contemplating looking at an addition or a reduction or a trade-off between accounts, if you could give your fellow Board members a heads-up on what you might be thinking of presenting at the Tuesday meeting. That would be helpful to us as Board members, but it would also give Dr. Tidal a chance to cost things out, so that we were dealing with, quote, "real numbers," and not kind of back-of-the-envelope numbers that we might be trying to create on that Tuesday. So that's the process, as I think we are going to try and lay it out, and so I would ask, I think we have some time at the moment, if there are questions on the health insurance line in particular. You don't have to ask, but if you had something you wanted to ask.
And I apologize if I missed this, Mr. Dwyer, I did make a request, I believe last week, so we get a picture of the entire fund, town and board side. It's, we're a little disadvantaged without being able to see what the health of the entire fund looks like, and I wonder if that's going to be possible for us to have that.
Thank you for reminding me. The town, I think, produces their report in conjunction with delivering the first selectman's budget, so I'm not sure that we'll have it by the time we would have to vote, but Dr. Tidal will inquire to see where they are with that report, but I'm not sure that it'll be available by the time we have to vote. But certainly, once it is available from the town, we will get it for the whole Board. Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, I asked last time, and I was actually, quite frankly, surprised that Aon didn't have it. I felt they should have it, and that is what clusters we have moving forward. I think we're accommodating now what we see as an increase, but I think it would help guide us in anticipating if we're going to take any additional increases, if we see any particular patterns. And I think that is actually of great value, and I think we should be notified of that. These folks do this as a steady diet. They're actuarials. They don't make any recommendations without looking at that. So I'm sure they have the information, and I think it would be very helpful for this Board to be able to plan moving forward, including, and I'm talking about this coming year and this budget, of what those numbers look like.
Yeah, I think their response last time is that they have it, they haven't drilled down that far, but they intend to, and we can inquire to see if, and what I mean by that is, is it ready for presentation?
Yeah, expression, drill, baby, drill. Yeah, I think they have it.
So we'll inquire.
Thanks.
Mr. Convatito.
No questions specifically on the healthcare. I would just ask Dr. Tidal if the notes you read off to us, I couldn't take notes fast enough, if we could just get those maybe transcribed and sent out to the Board members so we have those issues.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I've looked at the notes, and actually, the handwriting is pretty good.
It's my best second-grade writing. And we haven't forgotten about the request about the unreimbursed expenses. We'll get to that. Got it almost ready. Okay, thank you all.
Any other comments on the budget that people want to make?
Study up.
Say yeah? Oh, yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Convatito.
In the meantime, as Board members go through the budget, are we free to submit questions for clarification or backup through the chair to...
I think that's preferred, actually, so that the superintendent can be better prepared and his staff can be better prepared.
All right.
Absolutely. The sooner you get questions in, I think it's better for all of us, and if you hit, if you do to the whole Board, then we all know what somebody's asking, and we're not repeating the questions. Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, to that same end, it expedites the process. It gives the staff, I think, ample opportunity to come to the table, prepare with an answer. My only other thought would be, if we're going to do that for the community's sake, I think it would be worthwhile having them also, if we post on our website what our questions are, so that they understand and can follow a bit more readily about the budget process.
For the public, I would remind you, on a unnumbered page, but it's right after the letter, there is a list of the budget calendar, and for those of you who are interested in the Board of Education budget, surviving the review process, the more attendance we have of people at the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and the RTM, it is always helpful to the children of this district to show that a community is fully supportive of a Board of Education budget. And also, while the Board of Education meetings will be discussing the budget... And also, while the Board of Education meetings will be discussing the budget, Dr. Title this Thursday, is it this Thursday?
Yes.
The brown bag lunch?
Yes, Thursday at noon.
This Thursday at noon, in this room, there'll be a brown bag lunch, and so those who may want to be able to talk to Dr. Title about, in a little bit more detail, he'll be here for that purpose as well.
There's really no lunch served. It's just a phrase, brown bag lunch.
Yeah.
Okay, or you can bring your own.
You bring the brown bag, and if there's something in it, you get to eat.
Right.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 11th, 2012. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Mr. Carey? All in favor, say, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It's unanimous, the motion passes. We're now on to student reports. One comment, though, you might have noticed as board members that we have not listed all of the committees, in keeping with the board discussion at our last self-evaluation meeting, and so if there's an item that is going to be taking action in the next meeting or two, then you ought to bring us up to date, but if not, please provide written reports. I'm not aware of anybody that needs to bring something to the table, but certainly, if there is, speak up. Riverfield, so the student reports, who wants to go first?
We'll start.
At the end of the table, and we'll move on up, okay.
Good evening, Board of Education and other guests. My name is Marco Pungello, and this is Alice Rocha, and we're privileged to speak as the Fairfield Lado High School student representatives. Tonight, we would like to share a few current events and accomplishments and initiatives of Fairfield Lado High School. First, the varsity girls' basketball team showed appreciation to their teachers before a recent home game, in which each teacher, each student chose, in which each teacher, I'm sorry, each player chose one teacher to show appreciation toward, and before the game, all the teachers stood in the center of the court, and each student brought up one rose to each of their teachers. And all of this positive energy from the players, the teachers, and the audience was brought onto the court when we were, and we showed how we could transfer this into playing, and we held an 18-point lead up into the first half, and we won the game with a 21-point lead. Another initiative that's going on is in our athletic department, and this is the sixth year we're doing this, is which we are hosting 39 student athletes coming from Denmark on our basketball team and dance team, and our school's looking forward to seeing the new faces in the hallways, and our teams are looking forward to some of their new teammates. A student-led organization called the Bella Boutique had their Christmas sale, and it was a success, and this is a group of students in our fashion department that create different clothing items such as handbags and scarves throughout the year, and they sell them to raise money during the holidays. An accomplishment we're very proud of in our community is, over 30 of our music students have qualified for Western Regionals this path month, and members from the jazz band, orchestra, chorus, and the regular band have qualified, and we're very proud of them. Additionally, it's the time of year again, midterms are arriving fast, and Ludlow's in review mode for most of their courses, and we're eagerly awaiting January 24th, which is a Thursday, for our first day of exams, and the long nights of studying and the early morning coffee purchases have already started. And here's Alice.
Also, at Ludlow, we've been feeling an overwhelming amount of unity and support since the tragedy at Newtown. We joined the country in a moment of silence, and everyone has tried to reach out in any way possible. The counselors have had an open-door policy where any students who have had particularly hard time coping with what happened can come in and talk about it, it doesn't matter if it's an academic period or anything, they can just come in and feel comfortable. And it's not only been faculty, like, with the support, like, all the students have tried to help, too. We've helped each other, and we've created a memorial in the lobby where students can express themselves through writing, artwork, leave some teddy bears, just to show support and, like, honor the victims in the tragedy. We've also, like, because of this, we've also started a bunch of new programs, like the Cheer Team has started a program called Books and Bears, where they're running a drive where people donate teddy bears and books to the victims and the families. We've also sold wristbands that say "We Are One" and that have blue and white, the colors. We sold them for $3, and everyone wore them and really showed the support for what happened. And the Future Business Leaders of America Club has planned a bright-out, which instead of having a white-out where everyone wears white for Ludlow, we're wearing neon green, and we're wearing these T-shirts that say, "Let Their Memory Shine Forever Bright," and it's really to show support for not only the school, but also for show how we've really been affected and show support for the church.
Any, thank you very much. Any questions for our Ludlow representatives? No, on to Ward.
Hi, good evening. I'm Danielle Clark, here with Casey Longley, and we're the representatives from Ward. Like Ludlow, our midterms are starting next Thursday, so we are all studying, cracking down, we're getting organized, our teachers are, you know, informing us, we're ready. Let's see. Our Alpha Prep SAT classes are continuing, a lot of courses have started already. I know people have enrolled in courses held at Ludlow. Juniors are also being introduced to the whole college process with, you know, their PSAT scores getting back and meeting with guidance counselors, so that's on our minds. Course selection sheets have been going out, are going out soon. January 31st is an opportunity for parents to learn about the new course registration process and course expectations. In early February, teachers and students discuss course options and recommendations concerning your grade level. There's an opportunity at Ward, it's a job shadowing opportunity coming up late January. The experience will be offered this spring to interested juniors. The goal is to provide students with the opportunity to spend a full day with an employed person. The student must complete an application, which is available in our College and Resource Center, but it's a great opportunity, and I know a lot of people are looking forward to that. Concerning our extracurricular activities, a, our student forum is going to participate in a handball competition, and that benefits money for Ward. What we're looking to do is raise money to put up pictures around the school of recent photos of the Ward class, and to provide a seating arrangement outside, that's what we want to do. We're also opening our school store this Thursday. There's been difficulty opening it because we must, you know, we're trying to meet the federal guidelines while compensating to an appropriate audience, like athletes, so we discussed earlier, and, you know, the whole food thing, but, I mean, we're opening Thursday, and we're looking forward to that. Our Random Acts of Kindness Club, there's, we're doing tons of Valentine's Day fundraisers, we're looking forward to that. I know a lot of clubs are doing that, but one of the most special things we do every year, it's an annual fundraiser, is buy a heart and write someone's name in it for a dollar, and the proceeds go to the American Heart Association, but, I mean, everyone loves it, it really gets everyone in the spirit, and we're looking forward to that. I mean, that's, that's pretty much it. Oh, Humanity Now, that's a huge one. We're, we're involved in the Starfish Foundation, and we're trying to raise enough money to send a couple of students to Gambia in Africa to help the Starfish Foundation, but we're really buckling down, and we're going to start fundraising now throughout the summer to help fly a couple of students out, and we're looking forward to that. As Alice talked about before, we, Ward has really come together after the Newtown tragedy. One of our students, Niles Luther, who's a junior, put together a concert for Newtown benefiting the struggling families. The event raised, I believe, over $4,500 to $5,000 for the families affected by the tragedy, and many local musicians participated for the cause, and someone from Newtown has contacted the performers and asked to possibly hold the concert in Newtown at the high school for the families there, because it was such a good turnout here in Fairfield. As Marco said as well, we also have about 30 students who are going to participate in the Western Region Music Festival this weekend. The seniors had their annual red and white dance this Friday, and the juniors had their annual county's dance this Saturday, and from what I hear, it was a big success, everyone had a lot of fun. And also, our varsity girls' basketball team is 6-6, and our JV team is currently undefeated, and we're really happy that our track team already has so many qualifier, so many qualifiers for FCX and states already, so we're really looking forward to that.
Thank you. Any questions for our Ward students and representatives? Mrs. Brand.
It actually just was a report, quick one, because I figured that was our next thing.
Okay, let me get to Riverfield first, and your report is on?
Actually, Sess.
Sess, okay. Mrs. I, and I should remind you that you have to stay here for the whole meeting. No, you are welcome to take off, or you're welcome to stay for the meeting at your pleasure. Thank you very much for coming out. Mrs. Ira.
Yes, well, in keeping with the chairman's request that, just giving reports on items that might require action soon, I just want to get you updated on Riverfield. As you know, the building committee put forth a request to the Board of Selectmen at the cost of $15 million, and there was a lot of leery response to that, so to say. The vote on the building committee itself wasn't even unanimous. So, when we were discussing everything, I reminded the committee that they could come back to the Board of Ed and amend ed spec, ask us to amend ed specs. They chose not to at that particular time. Central Office stepped forward, Dr. Title stepped forward, and his team, Mr. Cullen, Mr. Morabito, and they had suggestions for reducing costs. So, I requested that they meet with the appropriate people from the building committee and the architects to see if they could come up with some ideas to bring the costs down. I understand that they have met all the appropriate parties, they've made some recommendations for reducing costs, and those things are being looked into. Mr. Cullen, I believe, was at TFC last night, or?
Mr. Frye was.
Mr. Frye was, I apologize. They put together a handout, and we'll get that information to the board, so I just wanted to give you guys an idea about that. So, there is a possibility that we could be asked to amend some things, and that's all being looked at, so that could be coming to us in the, in the near future.
Any questions on Riverfield? Mr. Lu.
Thank you. Has there been any talk about adding security?
That was, we were already ahead of the ball on that. Luckily, before this was, before the tragedy even happened.
Been included, then, in the plans?
Yes, security's been talked about and, and included. In fact, I had brought up the Sherman entryway and how we had the double doors, and people are forced to come into the office, and they reworked that into, into a plan.
Any other questions on Riverfield? If not, Mrs. Brand.
I will apologize, it is not a voting item, but I felt it was very timely and also very important, because with a horrible tragedy that I think we're all dealing with, there also are some things that happened that I think are amazing, and I warrant the comment. Dr. Pickoff, who was head of Sess, coordinated all the superintendents in this greater area, Fairfield County and beyond, and worked with them to help coordinate any offers they had and any assistance they could provide. And the result of that was, on a Friday, they found out about Chalk Hill Elementary School. Within an hour and 15 minutes, 17 people were at that site to make that happen. Within five days, they had the building ready. So, as much as we were all dealing with how awful this is, I think we also have to remember that some people stepped forward and did some amazing, wonderful things, and that I think we're very, very fortunate to have them working on our behalf, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Any other public layers on our committee reports? If not, we'll move on to the next issue, which is the secondary math curriculum update. As a reminder to the board, when we finished at the last meeting, we said, should we wait until the next time it's scheduled, which is February? Should we talk about this at a regular meeting or at a special meeting? Dr. Title and I decided that it would be best to discuss this at a regular meeting through an expand, an additional superintendent's report. I think at the moment, the school system is committed to completing the study and getting a formal recommendation from our staff regarding the curriculum, as well as the textbooks. The curriculum for K-2, as a reminder, will be in front of us as a presentation in February with vote in March. The curriculum for 612 will be presented in April with a vote in May, and so this update is not intended to answer any questions in terms of any vote taken by this board, but as just an update as we continue to pursue this important issue. So, Dr. Title.
Sure, I want to say that the sec, just one slight correction, the secondary math covers grades 6 through 10, not?
Six through 10.
Six through 10, my apologies. That's okay. I want to say, you know, we've been hearing all the conversation, and that from my perspective, and as I've said to a number of the parents, we are completely open, from my perspective, as to what we recommend to you in terms of curriculum and materials for the secondary math. We are committed to doing a fair and open evaluation of all available textbooks for not just Algebra I, but for all the grades that lead up to Algebra I and, and for geometry. So, this is not a done deal. We outlined for you at the last meeting, process of how we were going to go about evaluating those texts and the curriculum, and who would be involved in that. We are going to give members of the public unprecedented access to give us feedback on the textbooks. We will make available to any citizen who wishes to come into our office, and we will have the student textbooks that are under consideration, and anybody who wishes to come in and fill out a feedback form and give us their feedback, look at our criteria, write notes on that, we'll be able to do that. And we will be taking any comments people want to make into consideration with respect to our textbooks. We have, and we are continuing to gather data as students take midterms coming up, as you heard from the students, continue to gather our student performance data to make the best possible decision here. So, all the options are still on the table. In the meantime, we did, as you heard at the last meeting, issue the older textbooks to the students for use at home. Teachers can use those as they see fit for home assignment, or if they want to use items from those in the regular classroom, that they can. We're continuing to provide support, as we always do, to any student who's struggling, and parents who have concerns about their individual student are really encouraged to pursue that with the teacher and the principal. We're continuing to provide support to teachers through professional development, through the math curriculum leader, you know, as we, as we move forward with this. And our goal in this whole process, all curriculum review, the goal we have is to improve student achievement in math. It's not to pursue any other agenda. And we know that, based on changes in society, changes in expectations, and our own student performance, that we have to make changes in what we're doing in terms of curriculum instruction and assessment in our secondary, not just in our secondary math classrooms, but in many classrooms. As the standards have changed and as the demands of colleges and the demands of the business world have, have changed, we cannot continue to do everything we've always done and expect results to miraculously get better. We do need to make some changes. We need to make the most informed decision we possibly can about that, but clearly, you know, we want to make changes that we think have the best chance of improving the achievement of all the students, and that's really what we're intending to do here. You cannot continue to do everything you've always done and expect our kids to master more rigorous content and more challenging assessments. So, we are working through this. We will have a full report on the curriculum and on the textbooks. We will have a full report on the curriculum and on the textbooks in the secondary level in April. I know that we have tremendous interest in this topic, we are taking it very seriously and we have no other agenda other than improving student learning. And we're continuing along that path and that's kind of where we are with it right now. So, I'll stop at that point.
There's a, questions raised about the final decision, but there's also been comments about the process that Dr. Title referred to in last meeting and also this meeting. I met with the policy committee and asked if we could not add to their scope of work, if you will, the policies that they're reviewing, which for us is policy sixty-two hundred, to see if the language needs to be clarified or changed in any way as to the process that we use to go through curriculum and textbook review. The policy committee accepted that assignment, if you will, and they have a long list of policies to look at, so this is not something that may show up at their very next meeting, but we hope that they'll be able to address this before the end of the summer so that we're heading into the next season of curriculum review with any revisions to that policy that may be required. Comments or questions from the board members?
First of all, thank you. I sincerely appreciate that this is going to be open, I think it's great. The only question I would have is more of a timeline and when you would want people to, if they're going to review the text, to have it in, their comments in, so that it would be, you know, appropriate for you to actually look at them?
Right, I'll have to review the exact schedule. We had put out a timeframe for that of when we're going to be doing the text, we've got to do the curriculum first and get that moving to the Curriculum Coordinating Council per the statute, we have to move that forward first. But we will get a notice out with plenty of opportunity for people. We'll actually, obviously, there's a committee that will be going through them and it will take some time, so it's not going to be, well, we'll send a notice out and say, oh, in two days, you got to get in here, because that would not be, that would not be good. But I don't have the exact dates, but we'll get them out.
Any other questions? Mr. Lou.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Title, for addressing this, I'm very glad you addressed it tonight. You know, I agree with you, I think we all want the best education for our kids. I think the thing that you have to understand that frustrates at least this board member is that when you still call it a study, we're putting that on our kids as quote, as test subjects. So, in some ways, even though I appreciate you saying, okay, we can use the other books and we can, the thing that frustrates us so much, I think, and I'm so glad we're looking at this in policy because it's definitely a serious thing we need to look at, is that we've, we're doing this study through the entire secondary system. If the administration, if you, if any of us decide tomorrow, like, this is not the right program, we have to then say, my gosh, what kind of time have we lost here? And I think that's a serious thing to contemplate. The other thing I just want to say is this, which is along the same lines, but not on that, which is, you know, there have been a lot of nasty and inappropriate things said about the parents who brought this to the board. And despite what you may think about the math program, the thing that happened that was good is they brought it to the board's attention. If they hadn't, no matter what you think about the math system, we wouldn't have known about it. And I just think that this board owes them thanks and gratitude for doing that because that's what a community is all about, being the eyes and ears and working together and I'm really hoping that in the future, we can, we can have better communication.
Mr. Convettito.
Yeah, one, thank you for the update. I have one concern, in a letter that went out for asking for volunteer, I guess from PTAs to PTAs to nominate, there was a clause in there that said people had to be one unbiased. I just want to be assured by the administration that those people who don't like the system, okay, or have brought up objections, aren't going to be eliminated from that discussion because they've expressed a previous view. I think it's important to have, you know, you can say unbiased, but none of us are unbiased. And I just don't want people to be eliminated who have maybe passionately shown one view or the other, and I think it's important to have all of those people concerned, involved in that conversation.
I think that's assumed, that any citizen, as Dr. Title said, is welcome to come in regardless of their opinion on the issue.
I understand that, but that's not what the letter said.
He's revised and extended his remarks. Mrs. Cannelli and then Mrs. Gerber.
I also echo Mrs. Brand's, thank you to you, Dr. Title, for addressing this, taking the leadership on this for us, for Central Office, for the town. And I think there have been, just following up on Mr. Lou's comment, there have been negative phrases thrown around for a number of parties in this town and I think it bears repeating that the parents deserve praise for bringing it to our attention, public advocates are critical for our system. Members of Central Office have also received a fair share of negative comments and I think it bears repeating, as Dr. Title did, that they have, I don't doubt for minute, that they have at their core, looking for the best interests of the students. And to vilify any members there, I think, is also a mistake. So, I think both sides of that need to be recognized. I also thank Dr. Title explicitly, or for bringing up explicitly, the issue of the professional development, because there's no question with what the faculty is attempting to take on here, with varying ranges of personal experience, that that professional development is critical. I just have one thing to say, because obviously, many people like to weigh in on these topics and for all of the Board of Ed reps in the audience, please make sure to pass on to your schools this news that Dr. Title has opened the door, that parents are welcome to come in and give this feedback, to do it early, to not wait until late, if at all possible. The feedback is welcome, you have been invited, it's up to the town now to take advantage of that. And for word of that to get out, it's really good, I mean, the Board of Ed reps have such an important role. Mr. Dreyer's already referenced their role with our upcoming budget, well, this is going right simultaneous with that, so we would hope that that, that the word of that would get out as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, thank you. I guess my question or concern would be, you know, talking, looking forward to the books, the curriculum that we're going to be approving for next year, but we still have half of a school year this year. And I just, I just hope that there will be as much support as is needed for the students who need it, so that this isn't, you know, a lost year for them, that I realize, obviously, the first year of any program, when it's a new program, they're always going to be growing pains and it will be difficult and, you know, I just hope that there will be whatever support is needed for the students who need that support, to make sure that it's not a lost year for them and that they'll be able to move smoothly into the next stage of their math career. So, anyway, thanks.
You have one last comment?
Yeah, one last comment. I'd just like to thank Dr. Title for keeping an open mind with respect to this issue and it was always, has always been my position in general, that it is local school district because it's, it is for what the locality and the people and citizens sort of want this district to be. So, you don't want to repeat it, it's always been my view in a sense of...
Doesn't hurt to thank Dr. Title a second time.
No, I'd like to thank Dr. Title for keeping an open mind and taking a closer look at this issue because it is an important issue for the community and it's always been my view, as sitting on the board as any other public body, I have said on, that it is a local school district because it is representative of the community and it is what the community should want it to be, as long as we fulfill our obligations to the state in providing the education required. But it has influence with the community and I'm glad that the community has raised this as an issue and that it is being looked into and I would encourage the community to take advantage of that and to have their input listened to and addressed. And I'm sure better decisions will be made and a better outcome may result, even though at times it is challenging and a difficult process. And the end result is, my hope is that it will be a better end result.
Thank you. Mrs. Brand had one more comment?
I apologize, I forgot. I wanted to also, a couple of things. One, thank Dr. Title because he did meet with parents yesterday and I think that was of tremendous value. And the other thing that came up in that meeting and also was my own personal experience, I can't speak for anyone else, but at no time when parents sent me any correspondence was there anything but less of praise for the faculty and what they're trying to do in the schools. They, there were, there was nothing disparaging said about any faculty or teachers, it was all positive and I think that was important to note as well.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next topic and I would invite our award-winning financial genius to the table to discuss the quarterly financial update, which is enclosure number three.
First place next year.
That's right. When we find out the award-winning financial genius, we'll invite her up, but...
There's not much to say about this report because it is all about the additional appropriation request that's in process with, to cover the Osborne Hill cost. A lot has happened in six months, we're at the midway point, the heating season hasn't kicked in yet, you know, there's so many other things that can happen before the end of the year, but, you know, we're, right now, as long as we get that appropriation, we're all set. So, I'll open it up for questions.
Well, you win the award for the shortest presentation. Questions from the board? Mrs. Brand and then Mr. Fattabean.
Yeah, my concern is, based on what I read, how we're going to make out financially moving forward in the year end, because we have extraordinary health insurance costs, we have uncertain state reimbursement costs, we, as you mentioned already, the amount for the PCBs, Hurricane Sandy, utilities are unknown, and in the maintenance section, it says that we don't have sufficient funds to finish out the year. So, my concern is, one, are we going to be looking at a transfer of funds and if so, what are we forsaking to cover something else? Because it's clear to me that we're going to have a shortage. I mean, I'd like to think that we're going to have, as Dr. Title mentioned before, the same consistent coverage from state that we've had in the past, I'm perhaps not quite as optimistic. And I am concerned about whether we're, we have, what we're sacrificing along the way and perhaps this isn't for you, Ms. Muncell, perhaps it's for Dr. Title, but I am concerned. That's an understatement, actually.
Well, I don't think you need to be that concerned. Do you want to make any comments on that, then I'll jump in, or do you want me to just...
No, go for it.
Okay, you want to try? Okay. The big caveat here is, we need to get reimbursed for the Osborne Hill expenses. If we get reimbursed for our Osborne Hill...
Repeat that?
If we get reimbursed for our Osborne Hill expenses, we will be fine, okay? We do have some savings this year in terms of additional retirements, okay? So, the answer to will we need to do a transfer is, we may need to do a transfer from some salary accounts to cover some of these other expenses. The Hurricane Sandy is a question mark. We are going to be putting some additional funds into security for the lock and buzzer system, but people should know that we are not going to be replacing the lockers at Fairfield Woods Middle School this year. So, you asked what the trade-offs were and that's going to, you know, cover a big chunk of that. So, we are making some choices going forward. Should we get the Osborne Hill money reimbursed, we are fine pending anything else happening between now and the end of the year, but that's kind of where I see it right now. I'm not worried.
Other questions?
After the twenty-eighth, I won't be worried.
It's a follow-up.
Questions on the, go ahead, follow-up.
If this is bonded, when do we think that we will get funding?
The whole idea of this is, they know we need this money this fiscal year, the town.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying, where is that going to come from? And if the town and the Board of Finance are looking at bonding it...
Right.
We, I mean, we're going to have a cash flow problem, is what I'm asking.
Right, well, the whole idea of this was, you know, when the board passed the motion to request the funding and when I went and discussed it, the whole point of it was that we need it this year. And when, you know, first selectman and finance director decided to move forward with it in this way, they knew they had to get us the cash this year, so maybe they bond some of it, you know, right away and give it to us. Maybe there's other sources they can tap into. I'm not privy to, I don't pretend to understand the whole cash flow mechanism on the town's side, but they've assured me that they, if this passes through all the town bodies, that that will cover us for this year.
You'll find an accounting answer to your question. Any other question? Mrs. Cannelli?
I had brought this up before, but I don't recall where any of the numbers might have appeared, but the expenses that the, that Central Office, that our budget incurred because of Hurricane Sandy for non-educational components of the hurricane and that the whole issue of being reimbursed by the town, I mean, if it's just a matter of moving them, I don't know how that works, but I was wondering which numbers on here would be impacted, is that a conversation that's taking place?
Doreen, you've got a Hurricane Sandy line somewhere, but it may not be in this report.
They're in Maintenance Services, they're under Maintenance Operation and Transportation, under Maintenance Services, three thirteen. It's in there.
In the actual budget, that's where it is, right, Doreen? In the new budget, weren't, isn't there, there was something where we, we tracked the Hurricane Sandy expenses in its own fund, right? Right. But it goes into the maintenance.
Its own line.
Its own line, in the maintenance. So, we are having a conversation with the town about that. We did bill them, so to speak, for the food that we used up, that was part of the food service, food supply, and I don't know where that stands, but they've promised us to reimburse the food services budget for the food that we used in the shelter. We're having ongoing conversations about reimbursement for Hurricane Sandy and how that might work because that is a cash flow issue. So, one thing is, you know, does the town say reimburse us upfront this year for Sandy and then when all the reimbursement comes in, they just keep it? You see, that's one way to do it. Or they could reimburse us for seventy-five percent of it now, because that's all you're going to get, you're not going to get a hundred percent. So, the answer is, conversations are ongoing on that front and we're advocating to try to recover it in this fiscal year. If not, then, you know, right now, Congress hasn't even passed the bill for the relief, so it's not coming soon. So, I think the best we can hope for is that the town would be generous enough to reimburse our seventy-five percent now and they would just take it when it comes in. So, ongoing.
Mrs. Gerber and then Mr. Fattabean.
Mrs. Cannelli took my question.
Okay, Mr. Fattabean, you're up now.
I answered part of my question. My question was that we did have some extraordinary expenses, including Osborne Hill and the hurricane, and you must have mentioned that the hurricane expenses were in the Maintenance and Services item as well as other expenses. My question is, are all the extraordinary expenses we incurred in that Maintenance Service line item or are they distributed in other places in this document?
No, they're all in that one, we created an account and put absolutely everything associated with that in that one account so that we...
Maintenance and Services.
Right.
That's why that Maintenance and Service account appears to be woefully underfunded at this point in time.
Right, right.
All right. My next question maybe is for Dr. Title. Given the extraordinary expenses we incurred in this fiscal year and the necessity to get a special appropriation from the town, do you have a plan in place in the event that that special appropriation does not get full approval by all the town bodies for this fiscal year, that we can balance out the end of the year budget?
There's no plan in place right now. One of the reasons that we brought this forward in the timely, the timeframe that we did is that we needed a signal from the town officially that they would make us whole for this and that if they didn't, that we would have sufficient time, you know, we'd have time to come up with a plan. But I'm being optimistic and we have received signals through this whole process from people in town that they were behind us on this, that we're doing the right thing and we wanted to get that school open and, so we have not, we have no Plan B on this. Obviously, if it gets turned down, we'd have to get to work on a Plan B, but I'm, at this point, not, in the scarce time that we have to devote to things other than Newtown right now, in the scarce time that we have, we didn't feel it was a good use of our time.
Concerns me a little.
It concerns me too, but, you know, there's only so many hours in the day.
We'll move on. The request has been heard by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and so it really is on the shoulders of the liaison to the RTM to...
No, I understand where it lies.
Who is?
Who is that person?
Remember, I gave that job up.
I remind you, I don't want to vote on that attempt, but just the liaison.
To make the presentation at the RTM and hope that they will agree that this really is needed.
It's liaison slash lobbyist.
Right. Mr. Fattabean, one more comment?
A couple, real quick things, these are more in the, in the people and personal expenses. I realize that account is often very volatile, but one of the numbers that I can't quite maybe fully... maybe fully appreciate is labeled Other Services. It has a fairly substantial overspending in that one line item. 307, Other Services appropriated $175,000, encumbered $199,000. I guess maybe just a little short indication as to what's driving that.
Excess cost reimbursement hasn't been implied here yet.
So that excess cost would not be associated with the people, personnel services, and the tuition? Aren't they also excess costs?
There's, the majority of it's in tuition, but some of it is in other places, is spread out.
So what would that Other Services be, other than people, personnel services, and tuition? In other words, I guess I don't see what else would be reimbursable.
It's other purchase services, I think professional consultation.
All right.
If you would like to know where we allocate all the excess cost money, right here in this green book, there's a page on that grant, and it lays out every category that that money gets assigned to. The excess cost grant, yes, for special ed, yes.
For members of the public who may not fully understand excess cost, it's because we don't add the last two phrases. It's shorthand for us. It's excess cost related to special education.
Some of it is occupational and physical therapy services that students get. That gets some of it as well, so that would be in the Other Services. So it gets spread out in a number of places.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carey, I think you still also had a question?
Mr. Fattabean kind of got to the heart of my question, and I had kind of wanted to add on to it. I was concerned about the $20,000 and where we would end up if, for some reason, that fell through. We've also talked about the sequestration, and that's about $200,000. Would that hit this fiscal year? Which is... If Congress punts and...
Oh, on the fiscal cliff? No. The fiscal cliff, Congress...
In this budget or next budget?
It's next budget. They forward fund education, is kind of how it works. So we're clear for this year. On it, there may be, you know, a small reduction, but at this point, no. The risk is to the 1314 budget and beyond.
One of the things I do want to request, it's great to have numbers like this. We've got this, we've got lots of falls in the air. We've got this ongoing issue at Osborne Hill. We're working collaboratively, I think, with the town on their buildings, which we probably want to remind folks that we share this space, and it's a town-owned space that we help maintain. But we want to kind of, I think what we want to do is look at the risk that we have here overall. We have risk with our insurance fund. We have risk in potential remediation in buildings. We have risk in terms of security upgrades. So I think that part of what we want to be conscious of as we go before the other town bodies is, we have risk with the sequestration, we have risk with being classified as an affluent town that receives monies from the state and federal government. And I know you've heard me say this before, but as we move forward in the context of the budget, I think we need to be identifying to the other bodies in our town and collaborating with them on those risks, so they can start to reserve for those risks in case we have a lot of bad luck like we seem to have had this year. Thank you.
Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, I asked for this last time, and I still think it would be very important for us to have, particularly since we've seen a dramatic increase in the health insurance costs. If we can add that to get a quarterly update, when we get our quarterly update, that we also get a report to see where we are in our internal service fund. And I don't mean that, you know, where we are actually in the expenditures.
I think that...
That's in the budget book.
What's that, Doreen?
Yeah, actually, quite frankly, the budget book really answers the question in what we're going forward. I don't know where we are to date, where we were versus October, and to me, I think, considering the amount of money that we put into it, I think it's reasonable for this board to have quarterly updates on where we are in the health insurance account.
Noted.
Thank you. This year's, this year has been updated, there's, on the medical retention page in the budget book...
Right.
This year's budget has been updated through the last numbers that we got, which was through November.
November?
I requested new numbers, but I haven't gotten them yet.
Okay.
So there's nothing new beyond what's already in here.
No, I actually kind of figured that, to be honest with you, but I meant on an ongoing basis, it would, I think, a good practice.
Remember, when Aon came, there was still one more month of updating to do...
Yes.
Which we did do, and we budgeted based on the latest numbers. Remember, they came in like early December, they didn't have the November numbers. You had seen the November through October. So we did see a slight improvement in November, not enough to move the needle a whole lot, but we did put the latest numbers in the budget book that we have. If we get an update from them, we'll pass it along.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the next item of business, which is discussion and approval of the Board of Education bylaws. You'll see the recommended motion on the agenda, but we have two recommended motions related to amendments, so we'll deal with those first, which is enclosure number four. For those with a good memory, you may remember that there were three recommended motions before. As I gave further thought to moving public comment up sooner in the agenda, it dawned on me that the Communications Committee is actually discussing various ways to improve communication, both to and from the public, and so I thought it would be better to have that committee kind of talk about this, and then if they have any recommendations regarding that, that they would bring that forward, because as I looked at my own motion, I thought perhaps I hadn't thought it through all that well. So we have two motions in front of us, and the first one is proposed by Mrs. Cannelli, and I would ask somebody to make the recommended...
Don't we have an initial motion we need to...
The initial motion is to be approved as amended, and so I think we have to deal with the amendment motions...
Okay.
So that we know what is and is not amended, is my thinking. So I would ask that the recommended motion for Mrs. Cannelli's proposal, that the Board of Education add a liaison position to Article 2, Section 3, Paragraph A, Number 4, by adding Letter D, the Fairfield Education Association, to the list of liaison positions. Mrs. Brand? Mrs. Cannelli, you made the motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Brand, and Mrs. Cannelli, you made the motion. You want to speak to the motion.
I do. I think it's important that we have on the books a designated person for attending as a contact person for them. Dr. Title referenced earlier the teacher evaluation program, and I think it is vital that we keep as many lines of communication open with the teachers' union while this process moves forward. I completely share Dr. Title's sincere hope that the state is going to come to its senses and not attempt to implement this next year, but as that uncertainty, you know, transpires over the course of this spring, I just, again, I just think they are the most important component of our town's education. They're the deliverers of the education, and I think that this board needs to have a position which maintains that level of communication on an official level. So that is why, that is the motivation behind the motion.
Mrs. Brand, you seconded it. Do you want to make any comments or not?
Very briefly, I, we did have it before. I thought it was extremely advantageous. What happens sometimes behind the scenes, if there was an issue, there were two occasions where there were some things that came up, and the head of the FEA called me. I then informed Dr. Title, and because of that, we were able to alleviate and quickly address something before it perhaps went further, and it actually saved the town money because of that. So I really think there's a tremendous advantage, and there's no downside.
Mr. Fattabean? Well, that sort of answers part of my question. My concern was that I think it's a good concept to do. I was concerned about how it was sort of implemented, because the other liaisons are in essence, public or town meeting. Issues like the RTM is a public meeting, the Fairfield Council, Parent Teacher Associations have public meetings, the Board of Finance has public meetings, the Fairfield Association, the Fairfield Education Association, I don't know if they have public meetings then. So the liaison issue would be a little different. It would be more of a representative from then to the board, but not necessarily attending any, one of their meetings necessarily. So it's the implementation, how it sort of works. It's a little different than the other ones in that category. But other than that, in concept, I think it's a good thing to do.
Any other comments, pro or con? I don't know who raised their hand first. Ladies first. Mrs. Iacono.
Well, I just, the reason that we got rid of the position were all the things that Mr. Fattabean just pointed out, and I think it's a great idea in concept, but the whole, the discussion that we had last year when we eliminated this is that that's what the chairman of the Board of Education is for. If there's an issue that the FEA has, they can contact our chairperson and address that. He's the spokesman for the, you know, the go-to person for the Board of Education. The other discussion was that we don't have any other liaisons to any of our other, essentially, bargaining units, and is it really appropriate just to have one liaison to one bargaining unit? Why don't we have a liaison to the administrators? Why don't we have a liaison to the paraprofessionals, et cetera, et cetera? So while it's, there's nothing wrong with it, but I think we already have it. We have a chairman, and that's who the union head should be approaching should there be an issue. And one of the things that we moved to before we finally decided we didn't even need this is we were just assigning the chairman, the FEA liaison position. So, I mean, to me, we have a de facto liaison position, and I don't know that we really need to have a, I don't think we need to go back to adding one. I think it's a little cumbersome.
To comment on Mrs. Iacono's, in case this makes a difference to any of you, I will support this, but I also believe that Mrs. Iacono is right, is that the chairperson of the board is the natural liaison to all of the bargaining units, and that I would be appointing myself to the FEA should the board approve this. Mr. Carey?
So I share Mr., I don't know if Mr. Fattabean is no longer confused, but I am confused. Is the intention for us to have a member attend FEA meetings?
Again, because I recognize the ambiguity of the position compared to others. I certainly think that they would, that that person would be available if the, because I can picture there would be FEA meetings where they might not want a representative of the board there. But that, the idea that there would be an official person, and I recognize the whole de facto position as well, but I just, I think this rises above that. I mean, if someone wanted, if people felt that there needed to be an amendment, that it would be a bargaining units liaison as opposed to FEA, I'd be open to that discussion. But there's going to be a tremendous amount of upheaval and uncertainty with what's going forward right now with the teachers, and I just think it's important to have it there in black and white, and not in a de facto position, but there officially. So to answer your question, I think it's at the sort of invitation of the FEA, but that would be, again, I know this has been here before. I assume that there is a precedent for how this went forward. That's not when I was on the board, so I don't know how it was handled in the past, but it, I'd never heard that there were problems with the previous chairs in terms of this being implemented.
If I may continue...
Go ahead. You want to follow up on that?
Yeah, I do. So I have a couple of concerns, and I appreciate that the intent, because I think the idea of having good communication with our team is very important, especially with the change. So I meant, that I do. And I do regret that the way our electoral system works now, we have not a lot of people who've been sitting around here for 10 years, because I think this is a type of situation where we need to benefit of some of that wisdom. Having negotiated the FEA contract, I think that there's a lot of things that go on. We are obviously in an oppositional role in that negotiation, this board and that body. So I agree with you that I don't think the FEA would want one of our members sitting in their meeting, because they probably have a strategy to help increase their pay, and we obviously have to have a strategy in our negotiation. We also are the judge and jury, as it would be, in grievances. And my concern is that as volunteers, we're going to run into some legal lines, and communications between a volunteer as opposed to a paid professional and our team regarding union issues could bring us a foul of things that will cost this community money. And I just want to be cautious that if we have a position like this, and I'm leaning towards thinking that it might not be wise to have a position like this, any communication between that liaison could be considered something that would be admissible in a grievance. And that communication could potentially, because the board's made that person a liaison, be considered, you know, the representation of the board, and we have a system for that. We have a chairperson who represents the board, and the chairperson has an edict on, in terms of what, in this case, Mr. Weyer, what he needs to do to build it, speak on behalf of the board, and he has to have majority impact. So I'd be concerned about that, and I heard the word behind the scenes in this discussion. That raises my level of concern, because I think that one of the things that's important is that we establish a chain of command with our professionals' team here, and that everyone understands what that is. And if we don't have a chain of command with our professional team, and there's a viewpoint that people can go around our professional team to volunteers, we might create a situation that's not helpful to getting things resolved in an orderly manner. So those would be my concerns and why, although I do like the idea of trying to find a way to have a better line of communication with our teams and all our bargaining units, I think that we have paid professionals that do that for us, and that we have to find some way, if we don't feel those lines of communications are solid, to improve them through our team.
Mrs. Brand, I think you had a comment?
Yeah, well, because I did it, and I will be very frank with you. I think what it did was reinforce a good practice. I'm not sure that any of the unions are aware, although it might be something that has been done in the past, are really aware that it is the chair that they go to. But when we put 975 employees in this district, who, as Mrs. Cannelli has said, are facing a very tumultuous time, and then make it clear that the chair is the contact for them, I think there is everything to be gained from that, and there is no downside, because as you already pointed out, that's your job anyway. But I think it makes it clear that that is your job, and that you are the contact person for that, and I think that's very important. I also think, as I said before, that when there was a problem, before it became a problem, and we did have a grievance, I could notify Dr. Title immediately, and we were alleviating that, which, quite frankly, worked very well. But that's, again, part of the job, and I actually think to reinforce that is extremely important, and I think it worked very well to the district's advantage, to this board's, and I would encourage and hope that board members would support it.
Mr. Iacono has a comment, and then Mr. Lou.
Well, since the conversation really seems to be more leaning towards making sure that they know the board is accessible and allowable, I'm wondering if Mrs. Cannelli would consider amending her motion so that it would read that the chairman is the, I don't even know if we want to use the word liaison or contact person for, I think we should be reflective of all of our bargaining units. I don't know if that's something that you would consider, or you have your heart set on, we're just doing one for the FEA. But my recommendation coming out of this conversation is that if the bargaining units aren't aware that they're, if they need to address something with the Board of Education, that the person they go to is the Board of Ed, and it needs to be in black and white, that, then we should make it in black and white. You know, the chairman is the liaison to the bargaining units. I'm just throwing that out there as a suggestion.
One, I think I already, apologies, if I could follow up through the chair, Mr. Iacono. I, and actually, I think I already indicated, I would absolutely be open to a, you know, friendly amendment for that, to change that, and I also think this specifically addresses what Mr. Carey said, which is, it's in black and white what the chain of command is on that, and let there be no doubt from anyone, you know, that that's how things should go. So, so long as it's in there, I'm open to that being amended.
So my suggestion is that if somebody can work on what they may think is the amending language, and I'll go to Mr. Lou, and then Mr. Convettito, and perhaps language will be created that affects that recommendation. I change that. Yes, Mr. Convettito?
With no disrespect to the chair, I have a really difficult time with a bargaining unit coming to the chair and saying, "We have this issue," okay? And that then, you know, my assumption is, would be related to the superintendent, and the rest of this board would be left at your leisure to be, to tell us about it or not, okay? And my assumption is that would have to be done in an executive session, okay? Because it would be coming at a level of a grievance type of situation, and I think the proper channels for that have been... And I think the proper channels for that have been set coming up through the bottom, through the superintendent. Excuse the slip bottom. But it should be a bottom-up flow. I'm really uncomfortable with a bargaining unit having the chair's ear, or any one of our single ears, okay, to report something to me that I could not report to the public in public session, okay? And I really think that that is a detriment to this board, okay? And this sort of wink, wink, nod, nod, that this is a, and no disrespect to our teachers, and I have reached out to all of them and talked to a lot of them personally, and if they don't know, they can pick up a phone and call me, or email me, then they haven't been listening to me. The proper chain of command for these issues is through the district and through the chain of commands that have already been set up. If there's something does rise to a level, there's a podium right there, and they have used it on numerous occasions, okay? If it can't be said in public session, don't call me on the phone and talk to me about it. There's a chain of command for it.
Mr. Lou, you've decided that you want to make a comment.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mrs. Brand. Can you just tell us a little bit how you did it when you were the liaison? I mean, did you go to meetings, or et cetera?
I actually was invited to a meeting. There was something they wanted explained, and quite frankly, it was when we did a hire and what the process was, and just walked them through. It went extremely well. That was the only meeting I attended. If the FEA felt they had to call me, they did. I think I actually, I got called twice. And as I said, my next call was then to Dr. Title. But as chair, that's not the only time that you get things that are confidential that you have to share with the superintendent, and you cannot and should not be sharing with the board. So to that end, there were those conversations, as there must be. It was not something that rose to that level. In fact, it would have had it not been addressed and my notifying the superintendent. That was my job as chair, and quite frankly, that was the advantage of it. Again, it encouraged us to be able to get it to Dr. Title very quickly if, in fact, we had an issue. And to me, it's just, quite frankly, it just helped us take care of something before we really had a problem. It gave Dr. Title the opportunity to address it. He could choose to go through the process, but it still allowed him the opportunity.
Let me, in one moment. It does strike me that we are repeating some of our comments. It does strike me that at the moment, we only have four people who are speaking favorably disposed toward this, but you have one last comment that you want to make.
Just a follow-up. So when you, were you an actual liaison, or were you the chair, or were you both?
Both.
So there was a liaison position, but you happened to be the chair.
Well, we created it as a liaison. Yeah, right.
I think I would ask if there's, if the amendment that was talked about would change anybody's mind, and if not, perhaps we should just proceed directly to a vote. Do we have anybody wanting to make an amendment to this? Any other final discussion on this? This is an internal matter to the board relative to their bylaws, and so we do not take public comment on these type of decisions. We're ready for a vote. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education add a liaison position to Article Two, Section Three, Paragraph A, Number Four, by adding letter D, the Fairfield Education Association. All those in favor, raise their hand. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Lou, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Brand. Opposed, raise your hand. Mr. Convitito, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Iacono, Mrs. Fattabean, Mr. Fattabean, and Mr. Carey. The motion fails five to four, four to five. On to the second motion, which is the recommended motion that the Board of Education change the notice period for meetings, agendas, and materials by amending Article Five, Section Three, Paragraph A as follows. The bold represents added wording and strikeout represents deleted wording. Notice of each board meeting, each meeting of the board and agenda and materials prepared by the superintendent listing all proposed action at such meeting shall be delivered to each member of the board at least seven days prior to each meeting. Subject to each board member's consent, the superintendent may deliver notice in the agenda electronically. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Brand, do I have a second? Mr. Lou, Mrs. Brand.
Obviously, this has my name on it, and part of the rationale for this is, a while back, we changed our bylaws. We had education meeting and business meetings, and our work was spread out a little bit more. We're having fewer meetings, and our agendas are that much more full. So, for instance, this weekend, the internet was working. The prior weekend, when I tried to tap into my Board of Ed email, I couldn't. Had that been this previous weekend, that could have been very problematic for me. If I'm not home, I want to be able to review materials, and I can't always do it and wait for a hand delivery, which is on Friday afternoon. So what I'm looking at is, I really think it would be a tremendous advantage for the board, given the volume that we are dealing with on a fairly regular basis, to have the extra two days. A lot of folks may reserve their weekends to do it, but we may not always be able to do that. I think our board decisions are only as good as the information that we get and whether we have time to really cover it, and I think it would actually help the board. So I obviously would like to see this supported.
Mr. Lou, you seconded it. Do you have a comment you want to make?
I agree wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Any other comments that people wish to make on this motion? Mrs. Iacono.
Through the chair to Dr. Title. What type of impact would this be on your staff, since they're the ones that have to collect the data? Is this a additional cost per se, you know, not only in time, but monetarily? What type of impact is this on your office?
Well, we went through this once as a board. In fact, I remember Bev Dyer, who was in the position that Meg is in for 14 years, said to the board that this is extremely difficult to do, and that it would cause a hardship to get this done. The real problem is in the months where we have two meetings. When you're trying to turn it around that quickly, you have policy committee meetings on Mondays. That means, instead of turning the policies around, which sometimes it takes a while to decipher what they've done, to turn that around by Tuesday would be subject to more errors. I will say, if the board met only once a month, this would not be a problem. But many months, you know, some months we meet once a month, and we don't want to have a different rule for once a month versus twice a month, I don't think. I think turning this around, we have two meetings in a month, is difficult to do. Obviously, we'd do anything the board wants, but I would not be in favor of this. I think this would be difficult to pull off. And, you know, the preparation of the agenda and the supporting materials doesn't just happen. Takes quite a bit of work to put it together, draft the agenda, draft the agenda, get it to the chair, back and forth, the order, the whole thing. It's, you know, I would prefer that you not pass this. I'd be perfectly honest with you.
I have a follow-up on that.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah.
And then Mr. Fattabean.
I didn't support this last year, and I won't support it again this year for those reasons. It just puts an undue burden on the staff that has to put together this information on us. And additionally, having served as chair, and this was my big thing last year with the agenda, it does take time to do that, and you have to pass it back and forth. And the problem with moving back the date on that is it increases the likelihood of you having to send out a revised agenda, because some things change, some things come in, some things different. And in my opinion, revised agendas are always difficult, because you never know what you're working off of. People don't know what's been added. They don't know what's been taken away. And there's lots of ways to get this information, and we just don't get it in board mail. If board mail's not working, we have personal email addresses. If the board mail goes down, we do have hand deliveries. And I just, there's so much going on in this district right now. I want to be focused on student achievement. I don't want them spending their time researching and collecting and hurrying to get stuff to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Fattabean.
My question to Dr. Title is, would six days be more palatable than seven?
Yes, of course. Six days is more palatable than seven. Five days is more palatable than six. Trying to save Meg over here, okay? I'm going to bat for you, Meg. You know, I just, you know what I feel.
Are there any other board members that wish to speak in favor of this motion? I want to see if there's anybody else that has a comment that they want to make. You want to make one final comment as the maker of the motion?
Well, yeah, I'd like this best, but if Mr. Fattabean would like to offer an amendment to this and suggest, I'm agreeable to changing it to six versus seven, I'm looking to get it, at least get us a little more time. So if Mr. Fattabean wouldn't be willing to do that, I'd be happy to accept.
I want to make that motion.
Okay. You're making the motion to amend the recommended motion to change the word seven days to six days. Is that correct?
Point of order, I believe the person who brought the motion forward has said she'd already accepted a friendly amendment, as long as the secretary accepts it, we don't have to go through a vote.
The answer is yes. Okay. Any discussion on the amendment as it is now presented, which has six instead of seven? If, Mr. Convitito, please, quick comment.
Yeah, if this amendment passes, I assume we're going to get no material for Tuesday's meeting?
What?
We're going to get no material for Tuesday's meeting?
You have the material.
Well, we're supposed to submit, I would like to submit questions, okay, and have some response by, you know, Tuesday. If we're not going to be able to get anything back after six days, then every question that I submit to you, I'm going to have to bring to the table on Tuesday. Is that correct?
Well, the meetings next week are a bit different from the rest of the operation.
It's not what the amendment says.
Oh, I know. I'm just, I think we.
The amendment says.
I think Mr. Convitito has made his point. Are we ready to vote? Okay, one last comment, please.
I just think that's a fair, a fair, you know, compromise, because I do think there are a lot of us, I really respect Dr. Title's position and the administration's position, that there's a lot of material to get done here. And of course, we want education to be our first thing, but this is part of education. It's what the Board of Education does. And the counterargument, which I think is also balanced and fair, is that if we don't get the time to really go through the material and be able to do the kind of homework that needs to be done, then we can't make the, you know, we don't want to have to revise our decision, so to speak. So, you know, I'm hoping that everyone will support this, because I think it's a fair compromise.
Thank you. We're ready to vote, please. All in favor of the recommended motion as changed, raise your hands, please. You have Mr. Lou, Mr. Fattabean, and Mrs. Brand. Those opposed? Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convitito, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Iacono, Mr. Carey. The motion fails. As a result of both amendments failing.
Before you go on, I want to make clear, my vote is, I don't have a problem with the lead time. And I think really what this board is struggling with is, when do we vote on an item, okay? And I'm willing to look at when we vote on an item from the time we get the information, okay? But if we're going to discuss something at a meeting, okay, then I want to make sure that the district has enough time to prepare the information and get it through me.
Okay.
Is it permissible to have a comment after a vote?
No.
No, it is not, but we're a friendly group. The motion fails three to six. As a result of neither motion moving forward, the Board of Education bylaws have not been amended. They stand as approved at our meeting, I think, last January. So there's no further action that is required on the bylaws. I will say one comment, that we seem to be extending the conversation on the bylaws from doing it at the November reorganization meeting to several meetings. What I'd like to suggest is perhaps at the August meeting, that we perhaps carve out some time to talk about it prospectively, so that when it does come to November, we're able to clearly take action and put this behind us, so that it's not falling on our desks. We do have to wait until the new board members are seated, and so therefore, if we have a tremendous turnover in the board, and those board members want more time, well, then of course, they can ask for it as well. But we, I think it would be good practice if we could get this issue addressed in one meeting rather than in several meetings. We're moving on to the next item, which is the first reading of three different policies. I'd ask Mrs. Cannelli if she would present all three, and then board members can ask any comments or questions they have. This is a first reading. Some of you may think this is like the fourth or the fifth reading of the internet policy, because indeed, you have seen it before, but the policy committee has revised it, and so they felt it was appropriate to bring it forward as a first reading, so that the board members would have time to look at it. Mrs. Cannelli.
So this is regarding enclosure number five, student internet use 6417. Having brought it to the board before, and it was remanded back to policy, there have been substantial changes, which is why this is, as Mr. Dwyer referenced, this is now back to as a first reading, now a second reading. Prompted by some concerns of the ACLU, taking a look at it ourselves as a policy committee, as the board, as the full board, we did have a meeting with council, which looked at the objections of the ACLU. The wording was rephrased accordingly to, we believe, address those issues. I'd like to point out that one thing that has been clearly separated in this phrasing of the student internet use versus the last one is the separating of district technology resources from personal electronic devices, that they are not viewed interchangeably, that in fact, there are differences there. And at that point, I'll wait to see what the questions of the board are. I mean, I'm assuming at this point, everyone has familiarized themselves with it, and that you have your questions and concerns, which hopefully, myself or the other policy members can address.
Questions on policy 6417 as a first reading. Mr. Lou.
Thank you. I still have problems with this. The line, the, what is it, the second page?
I'm already there.
Okay. May the school, one, two, three, fourth paragraph near the bottom, "The school may search the personal electronic device in the manner to the extent it is consistent with and limited to the initial basis for the responsible suspicion, to determine whether a violation of the district or administrative policies, rules, and regulations, a state of federal law, has occurred." This is still the same problem that I think is what the ACLU was talking about. I too believe that this is just overreaching. I don't have a problem with confiscating if there's a suspicion of something doing wrong, but to then go into someone's personal device, I just don't think that's the school's, the school's place for this. And I'm not, can I, a question is that council, was the council, CAVE council, or was it our personal council?
Personal council.
I mean, I wonder if we should be sending this to CAVE as well to get their advice, given that, I still don't think, who said ugh?
Karen can address that, because she researched it initially, if you want. Because I think we started with CAVE, of course. Well, yeah.
This, to me, is just wrong. It's just not right. It's a violation of personal thing, so I would not be supportive of this in this, with the current language.
Mr. Carey.
Could I respond to that first?
Please do.
First of all, I'd like to point out the different, one critical difference, and I had that sentence already marked up, so I was there as soon as you raised it. The paragraph at the top of that page, last sentence, "District technology resources are subject to search at any time." And that the language that Mr. Lou just pointed out, so one, that was one point where we explicitly separated the two with regard to search, that we do have that these personal electronic devices with the phrasing of reasonable suspicion is what applies to a student's backpack, that with reasonable suspicion, it may be searched. So in terms of privacy, this is already what is the practice of the school. And that this is with, what I do think is an absolutely critical component of this, once we act on it, if we should approve it, is that this be very clearly communicated to the students, to their parents. No one is looking for a gotcha moment out of this. No one is looking to catch people doing it wrong. But to give teachers and administrators the very explicit guidance on what they should do, because if we are starting to open that door to knowledgeable, to saying, "You are allowed to have and to use these personal electronic devices," and to have rules like this be clear, again, no one is looking for the gotcha moment, and we are now treating that, with that wording, like a school bookbag, in that they can be searched only with reasonable suspicion, and we were very careful with the phrasing of "that is consistent with and limited to the initial basis," so that there can be no extensive search. That language was put in there explicitly for that reason.
I wonder if I could remind the board that this is a first reading, and the time for debate on the issue, if you will, leading to a decision, will be at the next board meeting, which will be the regular meeting, January 28th. Mr. Carey, you had a comment?
I have a follow-up.
And you had a follow-up to Mrs. Cannelli's comment, and then Mr. Carey.
But I just also want to say that I am confused, Mr. Chairman, because I had thought that one of the things we were told once was that we should be talking about things at the first read, so they're not all stuck up at the end before the vote, and that has time for changes, et cetera. But that's something we could talk about later. My follow-up would be, is that...
My, my follow-up would be, is that, I understand what you're saying, and it's very, very tricky. We're treading into new, new territory here, but I, I still, I mean, what, what should happen, I mean, I don't know if you talked about this with, with council, is what should happen if, if they're looking through something, and by accident, they trip onto something else that had nothing to do with it, but it's not necessarily something that's good, and, and something that really shouldn't be in there, but it's personal. Then what happens? Do they have to ignore that? And, and, and also, because a backpack, which is kind of a different thing altogether, I, you know, than, than these things, which just hold so much information, I, I am just very wary of, you know, that, that this could just take us down the wrong road, and I'm not comfortable with it at this point. I just think the language is too broad. It's not about the gotcha moment, I understand that. I think it's about protecting, you know, a person's rights in, in making sure that there's areas that they don't, you know, and that's kind of why we have these protection rules here, so that you have to have a reason to, to look through certain things. I mean, unless they just turn it on, it's the first thing, then they have to flip through things. And then you're going into personal areas that are just wrong. It's not the, a backpack you open up, you can see very clearly. I, I just, I have a, I, I still think this wording is just not going to work.
Mrs. Cannelli, if I can get to Mr. Carey.
And I, I will yield to your advice, Mr. Chair, in terms of extended debate here, but I did want to offer, this happens to be an area where I have a little bit of personal expertise, owning a company that did information security consulting for a number of years. I believe the ACLU, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, you policy folks were pretty deep in this, this concern was primarily that devices that could be in the home could be searched based on how it was read, and that's, that's how I read the letter from the ACLU. So I think your separation here is good, and I do appreciate the work you've done. The, the challenge with this, and I'll be very brief, is that these devices offer us tremendous capacity capability and cost savings that will allow us to increase programs and services, because we'll be spending less money for things like bound books. Letting the students bring their own devices is very forward-thinking, and I think it's a, a good way to go, but there's a negative. In any security issue, it's the balance between openness and being safe. And there's different degrees of being safe here for our children, depending on what age they are. And an argument that I heard very strongly, when we decided that we were going to breathalyze our students, is that we have a responsibility for them when they're in our buildings, as their parents. In parente loca, I think is what I read several times. And these devices have the ability to wreak havoc on our resources. Very costly havoc. Detrimental havoc to our networks, to our information, to the confidentiality, to the integrity of our information. So it is important that our administrators have the ability to ensure that any device that's going to be utilized on our network is not being used to degrade or damage our network. And so there's going to have to be some, as Cannelli pointed out, backpack rule, if we want to take advantage of the benefits. And I do completely appreciate Mr. Lou's concern there, but there, there's a bigger issue here, and the issue is that we've got multimillion-dollar investment in our infrastructure, and we have to be able to protect that investment if we want to utilize it more aggressively. And I, I wholeheartedly approve, approve of, and, and want us to get to that point, where we're using that infrastructure more aggressively.
Thank you. Mrs. Brand.
I have the same reservation as Mr. Lou's. In part, some of these phones are actually the hand-me-downs from a lot of parents. Information that may be extremely confidential, that would be related to the parent, not the child, would be on it. I would feel infinitely more comfortable when we're talking about something that a teacher may or may think was suspicious, if the phone and the child then are brought to the principal's office and the parent's called. I'd feel a lot more comfortable about that. I think the issue is the abuse of it, and a behavioral issue, and the misuse, of course, but I think in order to protect the students' rights, I think the parent should be involved with that as well. I, I feel a lot more comfortable, because that is then self-limiting. I think it achieves what you want to do, but I also think it protects the students' rights and the privacy issue.
Clearly, there are two different viewpoints on this, and they probably will be argued for the rest of time. Mr. Lou.
Let's hope not. I, I think, you know, Mrs. Brand's actually, is, is an excellent point, and, I mean, that, then I think possibly there's a middle ground here, is that if the, if it's confiscated, and then the parent and the child is in the principal's office, and altogether, people can look through it, there can be some balance where the parent is there to watch out for the child, the principals are acting in good faith to try to get to the bottom of a possible situation, then possibly, you know, but if, if not, then you have people going through this. I, I just think it's just the wrong, again, the wrong thing. And I also want to say, with all due respect to Mr. Carey, that I am appreciative of, of the cost, but the cost is really just not a great reason to bend over on some of our rights, and, and to sort of put us in a precarious position that possibly could get us into deeper water with, you know, legal troubles if we were to go into areas by accident that we shouldn't be on someone's personal thing. So I, you know, it's always a trade-off. We want people to bring these things, because it's going to help us save money, but then possibly, we're going to also have to realize that people are allowed to have a certain amount of rights over their own personal materials.
I would remind the board that the policy was reviewed, remanded back to the policy committee. They revised it in substance and brought it forward again as a first reading, and so I, unless a majority of this board says remand it back to them, the policy committee has recommended this to you, three to zero, and therefore, what I would suggest is if there are any changes to this that people wish to make, that they come to the January 28th meeting and send in a written amendment, 20, 29th meeting, send in a written amendment, so board members can consider it and then take action appropriately. Mrs. Cannelli, did you have a final comment, or did Mr. Fattabine?
I may add a quick comment, I guess. Just, I, I think that the, it's certainly my view that this is, the language in this amended policy is constitutionally permissible, according to the law, but I think the bigger question is whether as a policy, this board wants to extend as far as the Constitution permits. So that's the real debate, not whether I think we're extending beyond what is constitutionally permissible, or get ourselves into some sort of legal issue. But, and that's a legitimate question, is, is should this board, as a policy, go to the limits of what the Constitution permits? Or should we raise the bar a little higher and make some limits, and respect personal privacy a little more than, than the law permits?
My question is sort of legally related, so I'm good.
Oh, you're good. If there are no further comments on that policy, the other two?
Next, I'm sorry. Next, enclosure six, the student internet use number 5335, that's entirely dependent on what we do with enclosure five. The point being that CAPE, CAPE found through its audit, and we're finding increasingly within the office redundancies, and so this policy, you're looking at it in its original form in enclosure six, that that is proposed for deletion to eliminate a redundancy. So again, any action on enclosure six is very dependent on five. We do not want to delete something before we have something new in place.
Clear to board members? Move on to number seven?
Okay, oops, lost that paper.
Policy number 4235.
Okay. Electronic monitoring, 4235, you can see the changes in red, which I, again, I assume everyone has familiarized themselves with. This is once, again, one of those instances of trying to bring official policy and sending out notice of official policy of certain things that are already taking place. And so to make it official, and to give everyone notice, you can see these changes. I'll just immediately defer to any questions.
Any questions on this policy? Mr. Lou.
Again, again, the, the CAPE question. So we're not personally happy with the way CAPE has, has been able to assist us, or not necessarily, in terms of language? Oh, I just thought there was some talk that, that you had tried to get wording from, for some of this stuff through CAPE, and you, you weren't happy with what they gave you.
Karen, you need to come up to the table.
Oh, well, I'm, yeah, okay, yeah.
That first one, 6417, the policy committee didn't like the CAPE language.
On, on the student internet policy, the one we just did?
Right.
CAPE does not write language on a policy unless there's been a court case that has substantiated, and they haven't developed a policy on bring your own device. So we consulted them after we got the letter from the ACLU, and they basically told us that they're, they felt the ACLU concerns were related to the search and seizure piece, to make it more specific, and that they felt the best way for us to handle that was have our, the board's attorney develop the policy, looking at the law, so that if, if we ever had to defend it, that would be the council that would be defending it.
Okay.
And then on this one, though, we did go to CAPE, and they did have a policy, and we took their recommendations, and we told them what we were doing in practice. They looked at it and said, yes, it's fine the way it is.
Okay, great. So, so that these additions are based on some CAPE recommendations?
Well, it sort of happened the other way. The, the additions were basically to make the policy compliant with what we're actually doing.
Okay.
So to add some things, for example, the video surveillance on all school transportation vehicles.
Right.
We're doing that, so we wanted to put that in the policy for notice, and then after we added those things, we gave it to CAPE and said, are these in line with the way it should be? And they said, yes.
Okay.
Any final comments on the first reading? A quick one, right?
Just because this also includes the faculty, there are no contractual issues with this as well?
Not, not that I know.
Thank you. So this will be on our next regular agenda, and again, any amendments should be forwarded to us, so that we can make them part of the packet. Our next item is approval of the Advisory Committee on Motion and Mission and Goals, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Advisory Committee on Mission and Goals. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Cannelli, do I have a second? Mrs. Brand? Mrs. Cannelli? Oh, and by the way, this is an unnamed, unnumbered enclosure, but it was part of your packet, and it looks like this for those of you who are searching for it.
So at the top, it says Fairfield Board of Education, Mission and Goals Review Advisory Committee, proposed commission statement. I do not need to read it to you. In essence, it was the, the issue of examining the mission, and examining the goals of the district, was what, was our top-scoring board goal. It has been given back to policy as of late spring, early fall, and has sat for some time. We then discussed it at our December meeting, as being something for which we did not have sufficient time to make it be the sole focus of the three of us, with all of the legislative action that we need to address in the policy committee. So at that December meeting, we had voiced to Mr. Dwyer our interest in getting other board members involved, other community members involved, in moving this forward, and then it was in our January meeting that we came forward and approved this official wording, to come back to the board for the purpose of forming a committee to formally look at this, being compliant with state statutes, since this involves looking at educational goals, of involving a variety of members of the community in looking at this, the three components. And so it is with that commission statement that we bring this back to the full board now.
Mrs. Brand, do you want to make any other comments, as the secondor?
No, I, I fully support it.
Any comments or questions from the board? This is an internal matter as well. No public comment? You can take, okay. Yes, that's true. This is a effort to fully engage the community in the establishment of the educational goals of the school system. It's been a while since they have been revised, and so the statute does call for full participation from various constituencies, and after naming board members, we will then search for community members from various constituencies and the general public to participate in this. So tonight, if there's any other public comment on this motion before we take action on it, I would invite you to come up to the podium. Public comment. Seeing none, back to the board. Are you ready for a vote? All in favor of the recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the Advisory Committee on Mission and Goals, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. It's unanimous. So thank you very much. Now off to the races with that business. We now are on to the discussion of revised educational specifications, Osborne Hill School, which will include an update. Dr. Title.
Yes, thank you. So, as you know, we put forward a more extensive proposal to the town than the original specs called for that you approved. And the reason that we put a more extensive proposal forward was that in the course of doing the window test, testing for PCBs, we all know what happened. And therefore, we need to do extensive abatement, including in the gym, and so we revised the ed specs to reflect that, so that when we put this in for reimbursement, we've covered our bases, so that they don't look at this and say, well, you only put in for windows, you didn't put in to clean up the gym, or any other places. So Sal and I worked on this to, to do that, so, and also to see if we could get state reimbursement on some FF and E items. The very last phrase on page two would give us the opportunity to seek reimbursement for any furniture fixtures and equipment that became contaminated and needed to be replaced as a result of the PCBs. So that's why it's back before you. We have it on as a first reading for discussion and a vote at the next meeting, because it is sort of a new item, but you, you went through these, these specs once before. So that's really all I want to say about it.
It's my understanding, and I'll ask Dr. Title this, is that there's no, while there's interest in timely doing this, it does not have to be done tonight. It could be waiting till the January 29th meeting?
Yes, oh yeah.
Any questions or comments from the board on the Osborne Hill specs? Yes, Mrs. Brand?
I know I've read this, and quite frankly, I'm perfectly comfortable with voting on this this evening. I know to move this forward, it would take two-thirds of the board to do this, but, you know, we've been watching this happen for a while, so I don't think this comes as any great surprise to any of us. So I would put forward that we couldn't vote on this this evening.
You want to add a business item to the agenda on a vote of six to zero?
Yes, I would, I would second that.
So it's moved and seconded. Any discussion on adding a business item to approve the educational specifications for Osborne Hill Elementary School, that is labeled enclosure number eight, dated January 15th, 2013? Any conversation on that? Okay, if you're ready to act, all those in favor of adding this as an agenda item, raise your hand. It is a unanimous vote. It is now a business item, so the recommended motion, I think, would be to approve the educational specifications for Osborne Hill Elementary School, labeled enclosure number eight, January 15th, 2013, if you adjust the little 12. Is that a reasonable motion? And the secretary has that?
Yep, so moved.
Mrs. Iaccona moved it, Mr. Carey seconded it. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Fattabine?
On page two of the project, the highlighted portion, last sentence? It says, "The removal of the hazardous material may include the demolition and reconstruction of buildings, elements, and spaces." Do you have any additional insight as whether or not what needs to be accomplished could be accomplished through remediation, or whether demolition is still a possibility, depending on what?
Well, the, the current plan is to go through remediation, but once an architect is hired to really get in there, if there's a possibility that maybe some demolition or some reconstruction may have to happen, this gives you the flexibility to do that. The architect's report put forward two options, and the one that's moving forward is the, is the remediation one, but it's possible we may have to do a hybrid, so this just allows the possibility to happen, but we're going to do everything we can to do it as a remediation.
Other questions? Mr. Carey?
If I understood and was following this right, we're now including the hallway between the, the pod and the, the building?
It's in there for now. That may not survive, based on costs, and may not survive based on code requirements. So that's something that will be researched by So that's something that will be researched by building committee. It may or may not end up in the project, depending on those factors.
And that was, that was my, my, my next question and concerns here, out ahead of me, Dr. Title. We have a $4.2 million price tag of this at this point?
This particular price tag is about 3.4.
3.4.
The other $800,000 is to recoup our costs that we incurred this fiscal year.
So my only concern is, in the past, the, the hallway brought with it code updates that were into the $2 million range, if I recall correctly.
Yeah.
What I don't want to do is come in at 3.4, 4.2, and then say, oh, it's 6.2, and have to go through the second cycle.
No, that's not, that is not happening. If this can't be done, and this causes millions of dollars in code updates, that's going to be dropped like a hot potato.
I understand the need to, to connect, to connect the buildings.
Right.
In light of the current environment we're in.
Right.
And, and I appreciate and support that, I just want to make sure that we're.
Right.
Making sure that all the town bodies know what the exposure is here.
Right. We're, we're close to getting an appropriated number, and that's the number we'd have to live within. I think the only thing that might, you know, potentially change that would be if the remediation comes in higher itself, but if the walkway is too much, then it will wait for another day.
Other comments or questions, or are we ready to take action? So, okay, we'll go to the public for this unannounced action item regarding Osborne Hill that everybody has been following since last summer. Any members of the public wish to comment on the recommended motion? No members of the public, back to the board. Are we ready to take action? All those in favor of the motion as stated, raise your hand. It is unanimous, so we now have revised educational specifications.
Oh, thank you. That's a first. I'm usually the one that says, you know, I really want you to act on this tonight. I would just, uh.
Ludlow.
Yeah, I'm going to just note that that would be 11B1 on the agenda for the minutes and so forth. All right, Ludlow High School, this is, um, this is a follow-up to the long-range facilities plan that has in it one project that's very old, which is the replacement of the windows at Fairfield Ludlow High School. In addition to that, the board had authorized the chairman to send a letter to the first selectman authorizing a building committee for the expansion of the cafeteria and the adding of additional classroom space at Ludlow because of the crowding issue at that school. So those two pieces sort of got the ball rolling on this. We also wanted to give the board, you know, a couple more options here, and you can decline if you wish, and that's why it's up for discussion. There are two other parts of the Ludlow High School that are in the long-range facilities plan that we included in here, but they, of course, will cost money. And we always get the question about, well, shouldn't we just do this all at once? You know, why not just bundle it all together, do it all at once, and deal with the, the issues? Then people find out what the price tag is, and they go, maybe we should break that up into pieces. So the critical ones that are in here to deal with are the windows and the expansion. And what I would consider to be the optional pieces to that would be the renovation of the student bathrooms and the roof. The roof is past its warranty by a number of years. Okay? So we've been down this road before with roofs, okay? And I don't at the moment, and I will before the next meeting, so that's why we don't make a decision, we do have an architect working on costing these four options out, and so I can give you a general lay of the land on the cost before you make that decision, but it's just not ready for prime time yet, because we had to fast, it's Bill Silver again, so he had to fast-track them on the Osborne Hill when the selectmen decided we wanted that immediately. So the, so the costing on Ludlow got delayed. The other thing is, to alleviate some concerns about what a project contains, we have taken a new tact with ed specs, to avoid, what I'll term, for lack of a better word, the Riverfield problem.
Thank you.
Okay? That is to say, what typically boards have done with ed specs is approve a full ed spec for the school, but then it gets handed to an architect, and they do all kinds of things you never intended for them to do, because they're all deficiencies, and they try to meet your full ed spec. This is narrowing it down. So this clearly states, we try to clearly state, this is what's in the project, and by the way, this is what's not in the project, that we are not attempting to address every facility deficiency at this school, and our long-range plan has other things in it even that go beyond that, but this is what it contains. And so if we hand this to an architect, my goal is, that the board has made its intentions very clear, so when an architect designs to this, they design to the specifics of the project, and we took a lot of fluff out of this as well. So that's why they're smaller, more bite-sized, but they are, I hope, clearer as to exactly what the project is and what the project is not. In fact, we put a sentence in that says, this does not address all the program deficiencies in the plan. All right? So obviously, should the board wish to add those things in, we can always try to cost those out and add them, but we thought, you know, this is going to get out very expensive very quickly if we try to do the whole thing. So at that, I guess I would invite questions on the specifics, without getting into the gory details. We do anticipate bump, you know, at least conceptually, making, enlarging the cafeteria toward the parking lot, if you can visualize this, and then adding on the top of that classrooms, two science labs, which is a real need, that we're going to start running out of science labs there, and then four general-purpose classrooms. We're not, we identified several areas, but that may vary from year to year as to which content area goes in those, but those will be general classrooms. Okay, so I'll stop.
Mrs. Iaccone, and then Mr. Convetito.
Through the chair to Dr. Title, thank you, sitting as the liaison to the Riverfield Committee and having a whole big discussion about ed specs, and maybe it's time to modernize the way we do them. So thank you so much for you and your team reviewing those. And I forgot what my other question was, so there, I'll just commend you. Oh, I know what it was.
Thank you. Moving on. Don't remember, don't remember the thing you weren't going to commend me on.
If I looked at me, that would scare you.
You're gonna, you're gonna make me forget again.
Right.
Oh, I know, there, the, the, some of the issues that came up around the Riverfield thing, we're not having the ed specs before we were able to cost it out, before we were able to give a cost estimate out, so Mr. Silver will be working from this.
This is simultaneous work.
Excellent, okay.
Right.
Thank you. Apologize for having a little moment there.
Mr. Convetito.
Just quickly, we anticipate this addition going out the back of the cafeteria with classrooms above it?
We asked him to look at that, and I haven't seen what he's, if he's come back with more than one option for that, but that's sort of a logical way, way to do it, because once you bump out, now you've got the, the ground floor done, and allows you to build on top of it. That was our concept.
Because I, I know the town always gets frustrated when we say we're going to add two science classrooms and four general-purpose classrooms, and we end up with a 50,000-square-foot wing added to the building, okay?
We tried to be specific.
So, I, I mean, if, and I know ed specs don't generally include location, but if we can, as an addendum, okay, so we don't get off track with that, add that, I would, I'd appreciate that. And I'm not so sure that your bullet points, relocation of the teachers lounge and the senior lounge needs to be in there. I think now you're getting too much into the design phase, okay? There may be other, other, better ways around that from an architectural point of view, unless we already have a preliminary opinion on that.
Well, I, I need to look at what he's coming up with. I haven't had a chance to review even a draft of it yet, and if he's got really, if he's looked at it and saw this as really the only viable option is to put it out there, then that may be what we do. But remember, this project goes to a building committee, it's given to another architect, quite possibly, who may come up with a way to accomplish these two and four in another part of the building, not a 50,000-square-foot wing. So I'm not sure, again, this is just a question of how specific we want to be in these, do we want to tie the hands of the architect of record for this project going forward? This might be our concept that the staff came up with, it might be the concept that Bill Silver did, but I don't know whether you want to definitively close off other options, that's all, at the discussion point.
Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah.
And then Mr. Carey.
I, I know this probably isn't very popular, but I'm actually looking at some of the things that are not addressed, and I, I do know that the air quality in many parts of Ludlow High School is not optimal. I, I didn't know if it would be possible to just get a general ballpark figure as to how much that would be, just to at least see how bad it would be. I just, it's something, I, I'm just bringing it up because, you know, I've heard from my son and others that it's pretty bad, so.
I, I would agree with your son and others. We're just, I, we'll do our best. I don't know how quickly that could be turned around.
Mr. Carey?
How's that for a hedge? Okay, thank you.
Just a request, if Dr. Title's team, when you give us the, the breakdown on these four options.
Yep.
If we can get an idea with the advent of this new cost at Osborne Hill, and then this.
Riverfield.
Riverfield cost, where we are in terms of our capital planning budget and how much this is all going to be taken up, so we can look at those options in the light of how much is left, and I don't know, does any other additional information, things falling off the waterfall, like Osborne Hill's 97 kindergarten wing, or the first Fairfield Woods addition, if those are going to be coming off in a timely manner, that gives us more legroom.
Right. And we updated that waterfall out to 2020, I think we sent that to you as a planning document last Friday, you probably, you know, glazed over looking at it, but we are constantly updating that, so we can try to see where that fits in the plan. Clearly, the windows and the expansion, you know, those were clearly in the plan within this window, and so that wouldn't be new to it. The other two, but we did get a better deal on the Ward roof than we thought. So, you know, something's broken our favor, right?
Mrs. Gerber, and then Mr. Convetito, and then Mrs. Cannelli.
About, I guess about a year ago, a little less than a year ago, when, before everything went south with Osborne Hill, there were discussions about putting the Ludlow window and the Osborne Hill window projects together for economy of scale. In fact, that's why Osborne Hill was actually pushed back at first, and now it's kind of leapfrogged over because of the PCBs. Is that something that would be helpful in terms of trying to get better costs, or?
It's funny, that question came up at the Board of Finance meeting, right?
Yeah.
And the architect wasn't sold on that as a huge cost savings. It turns out that now these are in fairly, are not that far off from one another.
Right.
So it's, it's possible, the question would be, is there an economy of scale? If you're buying, you know, a lot of windows, would somebody give you a break?
Well, just because that was, had been used originally as a justification for putting off Osborne Hill, is you have to wait for Ludlow to get the economy of scale, so I was just curious if that was still, in fact, the case or not.
If I remember Bill's comment, he was not optimistic that that would be a, a driving force that would be significant, because they kind of have to be custom-made.
Right.
All right, you know, so, I don't know, is that about right? What do you, what do you guys think? Okay, all right.
I had it right. That was essentially his answer.
Yeah.
Mr. Convetito, and then Mrs. Cannelli.
I don't want to belabor the point. Page three, on what, what is not included, new and increased security measures, and in light of all the general discussions we've had in the last couple of weeks about this, should, is there, I mean, the ed spec itself does include security measures and so forth, right?
I'm not sure I understand. Well, yeah, there's security and safety in the ed spec.
What new and increased security members, measures have we identified that we're not including in? Is there something that's already been identified?
Uh, not specifically, no. We really need to wait until we get the police sort of a report, survey on all the schools and go forward with that, so.
When, when do you anticipate the board?
So, we're probably looking at, you know, March, April, in that range, to get something.
Is it possible to get a survey for this facility prior to that?
Uh, we can ask.
I, I just, you know, I just, if, if we're going to be doing it and tearing the building apart, then bond it, right?
Right. Well, we're trying to, again, and this is always the, this is the trade-off.
I understand.
Right? I mean, we're trying to.
I'd like to at least see those differences.
Sure, limit the scope, and, and for this particular one, I mean, look, you know, the real thing here is, the, you know, the windows and the expansion are, to me, critical parts of this, and we'd love to put forward that $25 million renovation plan that covers the whole thing, we just know it's not realistic in this environment, so, again.
As Mr. Convetito pointed out, there is a list of security and safety issues in here, and that doesn't quite jive with that phrase, and so perhaps the next time we see it, that phrase will be better defined. Mrs. Cannelli?
Actually, several questions. First, from Mrs. Gerber's comment regarding the air, I would just want to give voice to the idea that if air conditioning is discussed at Ludlow, I would expect that the board would promptly follow up with discussion of air at Ward, because one high school is not cooler than the other, one graduation experience was not easier than the other, and I promise you, from someone who's teaching, when you lose, I mean, I'm in a school that is air-conditioned, but when we lose it, to say that that is the sole topic of conversation in and out of school is putting it mildly. It stops teaching, it stops what you're planning to do. So I understand that it wasn't put in in the first place because Ward didn't have it, you know, I think it's a, it's a shame that it wasn't done, and then Ward was promptly addressed, because there's no question that suffering of some level is taking place. Second, on the issue of the expansion, is there any concern that by changing the footprint of the school, that we run into any zoning issues?
We've done some preliminary work on what's called coverage, and we believe we are okay with that. That will require further work, and, and that's also why, while we might have a design in mind for where this goes, that might need to be altered based on, you know, a more detailed review than this architect was engaged for.
Okay. Third question, are you worried at all about the support of the other town bodies, that they wouldn't come back, and I'll just say the word, that they wouldn't say, well, if that school is so crowded, why isn't there any redistricting to the other school that has more room? Is there any worry that that would derail the whole process early? That we, we can say, we have looked at, have addressed, one way or the other, this needs to be dealt with, we have a growing high school population? I would just worry that we would put in an awful lot of work, and that we wouldn't be able to earn the support of the town bodies.
Ensuring this, getting the support of the town bodies in these economic times are going to be challenging, no matter what, and I think people can come up with a number of rationales maybe for why this doesn't need to be done, and that might be one that we, that we hear about, but I think we just need to be prepared to answer it if it comes up.
Can I? I've, I've read the, the facility's profile, and so I'm aware of deficiencies, but I would, I guess, specific case, and I'd love to hear from Mrs. Iaccone, case in point, something like the cafeteria expansion. Well, given I know I am, and I've been very vocal about this, very keenly interested in looking at the high school scheduling, which could therefore impact lunch, which I think could be done in four waves, not three, perhaps alleviate the whole issue of cafeteria congestion, never mind that multi, you know, millions being spent to expand a cafeteria that could be addressed by a few $10,000 of getting different-sized cafeteria tables. I would just worry that in going ahead with the ed specs for a building committee, we haven't done the job responsibly of, are there other ways we can address these things? And again, some of it was prior to my coming on the board, I remember the discussions that took place when this was moved forward, but if we can make more cafeteria room by getting a different-sized table, how can we not be looking at that as a first option? Now, that doesn't address the science lab issue, I have no doubt that, that that's becoming a very pressing issue, but I just want, I mean, with Riverfield, I wonder how much it's setting them back, that this is now having to be reconfigured, you know, ed specs revisited, architect work done over again. Well, this might get stopped even sooner than that, if they simply say, you know, we have not done the job responsibly of how do we take care of these kids, and that there are other ways to do it. I'm not quite sure where in all of that there was actually a question, I'm, I'm just sort of.
Why I'm not responding.
I'll stick it out there.
No idea where you are in that.
There may not be a question, but I think Mrs. Iaccone wants to make a comment.
Um, I, in answer to your, into your redistricting issue, I, my response to that is there's no war, room to move anyone over to Ward anyway, and if you look at the pink sheet, the freshman class at Ward was actually larger than the freshman class at Ludlow, so moving people is not going to fix anything, and then we have the numbers to back that up. And I think you raise a valid point, and I think your question is, have we exhausted every option down to, if we change the size of the cafeteria tables, will that work? And if the answer is no, then we need to be clear about that.
Mr. Carey, and then Mr. Fatamine, address that question.
There was extensive discussions about the cafeteria and facilities meetings that we have for Mr. Cullen for hours and hours at a time. And my recollection, and Mr. Cullen can correct me if my recollection is correct, is that we could fit more kids in the cafeteria, but based on the size of the space in the cafeteria, by changing some of the table configurations, it would then become a security issue. Having too many kids in one space, not enough people to supervise them, and the tightness of the space was the concern of the administration when we looked at that almost four years ago, three and a half years ago. And if, if your recollection is different, Mr. Cullen, please correct me, but that's what I remember, Mr. Boyle telling us, that, that would be the bigger challenge.
Are you confirming Mr. Carey's memory?
A little bit. It's 50% correct. We did, early on, get an architect to look at the tables and chairs. And the first drawing he came up with, the fire marshal wasn't real comfortable with. It was too crammed, and we were still short about 72 kids that we could fit in there. So, then we revised it. So, we went to a rectangular table with the fixed seats, and the configuration, you could fit more students, but not enough to handle the heavy load at Ludlow High School at its peak.
And how many lunch waves are there?
At Ludlow High School, I believe.
There aren't any.
There's four.
There's no lunch waves.
I mean, in the blocks, how many blocks?
No, and the, the good news at Ludlow High School is there are four serving lines. They only use three. So, we have the fourth serving line to open, but we can't fit all the students in the cafeteria.
Can I, can I move forward? We were actually, I wanted to compliment the Board, that we were virtually on time until we hit Ludlow. Mrs. Brain, do you have a final comment?
Yeah, there are a couple of things in here. There's, I, I looked at what we're talking on page four. When we're talking about it, it says that encapsulates, encaps, you can tell it's later, encapsulation will not be accepted. And, and in this case, we just got through passing an ed spec that does allow for that. So, I think we need to reword that, because there are times when actually it is entirely appropriate and the best option to do it, not even financially, it just is, you should do it. So, I think that needs to be considered. It's, it's where we have code, any abate, any hazard material, encapsulation is not acceptable. We are doing that in many instances, so I think that needs to be addressed. The other thing I have a concern about, when I look at the peak of when we're going to have the students in that building, we already have, quite frankly, a tremendous need currently for additional classroom space. Everyone knows this is not my first choice. I, I still have concerns about this site, particularly when we have a fire drill trying to evacuate that building, I think has become extremely problematic. That said, when I look at the timeline and when we're having a peak, I, I know in our first grade that we're going to have quite a large group coming forward, but honestly, I'm wondering if this is actually going to even remotely get in done in time to actually service our peak. You know, we already are here. It's already happening. So, quite frankly, we're already behind. But I am concerned that if we do this, that it's even going to meet the need.
If we're finished up, because we won't vote on this until a formal recommendation comes forward at our next meeting, if there are no other comments, I would like to ask if.
Just one very quick, very, very quick. Dr. Title, will we get, will you be giving us any guidance in terms of the bundling versus not bundling issue? Because?
Once I get the cost items from the architect, then I think you'll have more information to make the decision. I think right now, it's kind of a theoretical thing. So, you may want to look at the costs before you decide.
We have to pass a motion if we're going to go more than six minutes. Can I have a sense if there's members of the public who wish to speak? And if there are too many that want to speak, we will entertain a motion to extend the meeting past 11 o'clock.
Can you ask them to line up so we know?
I need a mo, please line up while we're getting this motion passed.
Motion to extend the time.
Let's, let's figure out when they get it.
Is there a second? Mrs. Gerber is the second.
Motion to extend till 11:15.
11:15 it is.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous. It's 11:15 is our witching hour, so please.
Clock is on.
Mrs. Brown, you're, you've got the clock. And two minutes, please state your name and make your comments.
Hi, Kathy Coyle, 84 Sherwood Farm Road. I'm the Ludlow High School PTA president. The first time I spoke at a Board of Ed meeting 14 years ago, it was to express my concern that the elementary school had art on a cart. I never thought that I would be back to express my disbelief that our, that our high school has science labs on a cart. Science labs, even AP science labs on a cart. The diminishment of our educational standards as a repercussion of overcrowding at Ludlow High School is not something that we will experience in the future. It is something that we have experienced for the past few years, and this year, we've reached our breaking point. Two minutes of speaking time is not enough to detail all the ways our staff and students are affected. 12 out of 19 science, eight out of 19 English, six out of 17 math, two out of 15 social studies teachers teach out of more than one classroom. Some of them teach out of three. Those teachers are unable to assist students after classes. They must clear out of one room and travel to another. Instructional time is lost every day, as the displaced teachers must physically relocate class, lab material, and set up in secondary rooms. If the teachers say need six minutes to travel or to set up the new classroom, the students lose an average of 18 instructional hours for the year. Is that acceptable to us? Especially when our high school instructional hours are already well below the state average. Science teachers are choosing labs based on mobility, not on what's best to deliver the curriculum. Other classrooms are overcrowded, so much so that writing conferences are limited, because the teacher does not have enough time to meet with approximately 30 students. We have 11 sections that are over 28 students, while Ward has zero. Not only do teachers not have time, sometimes they don't have space to meet with a child, to plan lessons, or space a conference with staff or parents. Core facilities are maxed. Did you know that every day, students are turned away from the library during their free period, because there are not enough seats or staff to accommodate our children? My son says that if you want to use a computer in the library, you must receive a pass from your teacher and try and run through the crowded halls to stake your claim.
Excuse me. One of my most unpleasant tasks is reminding people of the two-minute rule to be consistent.
I have like two, three more sentences.
One more sentence, if you would, just to wrap up, please. You can pass in your statement, and we'll be able to read the whole statement.
She already has the other part of it. So, this year, every science classroom is being used, and we do not have to add, space to add another section, even though our incoming freshman class is larger than our outgoing senior class. Currently, 90% of our students take science for four years, an amazing statistic, one that will change if we don't get additional space, one that might change starting next year. I urge you to expedite the Ludlow addition and give it your full support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Laura Kotler, 165 Jenny Lane. I'm the Fairfield Ludlow High School president, PTA president-elect. As you already know, Fairfield Ludlow High School is well over capacity, and its numbers promise to grow until at least 2016, 17. We saw the increase in the elementary schools, and we built new schools. We saw the increase in the middle schools, and we've renovated and added on to them. Well, the increase is now in the high schools. With that in mind, our Fairfield Ludlow High School community is particularly concerned about addressing the issues inherent in such a situation, specifically the discrepancies between the recently released ed specs and the long-term facilities plan that was approved by this Board in 2011. Plainly, the ed specs do not match the long-term facilities plan, and more importantly, does not address the very serious issues facing Fairfield Ludlow High School now and in the future. Specifically, the areas that are not addressed by the latest ed spec include the HVAC system. I think there was some discussion about air quality. It's not an air quality issue, like that we need air conditioning, it's that we need heat. And we can comment more specifically later on, but there are classrooms that don't have heat. Traffic and parking issues, which will be even further impacted if this addition of classrooms is put in the back of the building, it will be in the parking lot and take more spots. Safety provisions, especially having to do with fire and, and getting kids out during fire drills, or, you know, more tragically, if it, if it's an emergency. And core facility issues impacted by overcrowding, such as hallways, library space, gym facilities. As stated in the Fairfield Board of Education Facilities Planning Principles dated June 22, 2010, the first item addresses core facilities and states, additional classrooms shall not be added without addressing the core facilities that will, that they will impact. With any new classroom additions at our schools, we must equally incorporate relative additional space to expand core facilities when necessary. More children may bring more space needs in the cafeteria, library, gymnasium, bathrooms, and hallways.
Again, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I need to stay consistent with the two minutes. If I, if you could pass in your statement, that would be helpful to us.
Sure. We just, I just want to say that we respectfully request that the Board consider everything that will be impacted by an overcrowded high school, making a decision about the solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Kelly Crisp, 194 Paper Mill Lane. I'd like to thank Dr. Title and all the Board members who took time out to meet with parents and to review our materials. I appreciate the commitment to transparency, that all options are still on the table, that old textbooks are, have been issued, and we recognize the support to students who are struggling. I respectfully ask that the new schedule and timeline that Dr. Title has noted be published on the website, so that we can avoid any confusion, there are no surprises, and that we trust that there's ample time to have meaningful participation and to provide notice to, to members of the community that might want to take action. I also ask that parents who are under consideration for inclusion on some of these committees have some level of expertise to account for the nuances. I know I've only been familiar with this for several months, and I appreciate how much information and background is needed to really be able to dig into the nuances and all of the details that are specific to math curriculum. And I would also ask that parents who have taken an active interest in math curriculum not be excluded or penalized for their prior interest in math curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Sure. Tricia Donovan. Firstly, I'd like to thank everyone at the table, Dr. Title and the Board, for meeting with parents and listening to all of our concerns over the math textbook for the last months. It is encouraging to hear that the textbook choice is still wide open, and that Central Office will be open to feedback from the community and to including parents on their committees as this process goes forward. Transparency and engagement will go a long way in the community toward creating more positive tone. And secondly, as a parent, I would also like to echo some of the Board members' concerns about this year's pilot students. Just to keep in mind, what happens if this study is deemed unsuccessful or not optimal? And how does the evaluation team really openly look at other resources when they are already intimately familiar with just one? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Lauren O'Brien, Edison Avenue. I'm a parent of twins that attend Fairfield Ward High School, a boy and a girl. I have a unique perspective, because my children are very different, both personally, their opinions and their attitudes towards school. However, they seem to be in total unison regarding the change in the math curriculum for Algebra 12. And what, my, my comments aren't as formal as some of the people that have spoken. I didn't intend to speak this evening. What my children are telling me is they often find the class time is unproductive and that time is wasted that could easily be avoided. My extreme disappointment in the current structure of Algebra 12 is only exceeded by the execution of that structure in class. At times, it seems to be exceedingly rigid, with instructors not willing to yield to what appears to be common sense. As a parent, I'm extremely frustrated when the child comes home and tells me that they've approached a teacher for, asked for help, and the teacher says, "Three before me, three before me." And the child says, "Well, nobody in my group knows what's going on." And the teacher says, "Well, how do you know?" And the child reports, "Because they're totally confused." And the teacher says, "You've got to ask three before me." As a parent, this is frustrating. Students are teaching students that are severely, sometimes have hearing impairments. It's taking away from, I find this model takes away from instruction time, direct instruction time. In theory, I agree that the design contains elements that are merit-worthy. Team building and critical thinking are important, skills to learn in school, but not at the expense of math concepts. Not at the expense of teachers teaching students the majority of the class time, not students teaching students. Certainly not at the expense of skilled, effective teaching by the professionals we pay to teach. And definitely not at the expense of students learning, mastering, and retaining while earning grades that reflect individual effort and mastery. It's extremely troubling when your child reports that their individual grades are higher than the group test grades. I'm all for improvement.
Again, I hate to be the one that has to remind people, but two minutes.
Okay, one last thing. I request that the Board Google the standardized exam to graduate eighth grade in the 1930s and 40s, and ask yourself if our students could pass that same exam as was required. And are we moving forward in the right direction with regards to student expectations and curriculum design?
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Yeah. My name is Dawn Llewellyn, 524 Sturgis Road. First, I'd like to thank not only Dr. Title, but the members of the Board who have offered to meet with parents over the last few weeks. I also wanted to state that we support teachers, we respect, and we admire the teachers in our community. As you know, in Connecticut, only Mansfield is using CPM and is in its full first year of implementation. It was introduced to the district by UConn professor and has been introduced to us. Mansfield uses multiple math levels in their math curriculum. By eighth grade, they have leveled groups, support group, which has two teachers, one assistant teacher, math eight, algebra, geometry, algebra two, five levels. Mansfield uses a block of 90 minutes for math, approximately a half hour of instruction and an hour of group work among the peers in their math group levels. Fairfield has essentially two levels, math eight and algebra, and only 2% to 3% of the ninth, eighth graders are in geometry. We could use another level, or two. Fairfield has only a block of 45 minutes for math. What is CPM? Majority of the time focuses on group think. The CPM philosophy dictates, teachers are not allowed to instruct in the traditional manner. CPM emphasizes that rote learning undermines understanding. A student must self-discover to understand a formula or problem before mastering the skills. CPM dictates guess and check for an answer, a method that tries to estimate highs and lows, narrowing the gap until the solution's found. Given we do, we only have 90, we do not have 90 minutes, this may not be an effective use of time in our district. CPM model requires very little homework, especially on skill practice as reinforcement. CPM is designed around interrupted or spaced learning, which means not learning a concept from start to finish, rather learning different pieces at different times.
Again, if I could remind you, your time is up, and if I could have you pass in your statement, and so we could move along.
The only thing is, let us look at what the top-performing schools utilize as math curriculum and model after them. I ask you, why settle? We all want what is best for our children.
Thank you very much. State your name and address.
Sure. It's John Llewellyn, 524 Sturgis. And once again, I would also like to thank Dr. Title, Mrs. Parks for their time yesterday. You know, given the tight budget that Dr. Title's presented, a quick scan of it, I noticed that there's about $225,000 slated for math textbooks at the middle and high school. And given what we heard yesterday that the CPM book was, one of the reasons it was chosen is because it was first to market, and it was basically the only book that was available when the review was done in April of last year, you know, we probably don't want to go with the first, because it may not be the best. I think at this point in time, there are a whole bunch of other books by other publishers who are coming out, and I think that, given the budget, we should probably hold off on investing in that until we know what the alternatives are. You know, let's look at the best in the class, not the first one to market. The, you know, there are all times when we've purchased the newest thing, I think, but at this point, let's take a step back, evaluate our options. We are fortunate that the administration structured the purchase in such a way that they do not need to commit to CPM's continuation. So, that is a huge upside to the way it was structured. I think that our curriculum leaders now have the opportunity to adapt the McDougal textbook to the Common Core, at least for next year, until another book has been selected. And I'd like to, you know, let know that, you know, let it be, there be no mistake, that CPM is rolled out, is not unreasonable to expect the cost could be north of half a million dollars by the time you get all the training and the books across all the classes. Given the current constraints on the budget, I do think we should encourage the Board to hold back on that investment and defer for another year. And if it's the right thing at that point, we can talk about it at that point. But I think at this point, we need to be fair to our children and evaluate everything else that's out there. After a decade of using CPM out in California, it's been abandoned. There are a list of probably a dozen and a half school districts that have abandoned CPM because of drops in standardized testing, increased remediation rates, and the like.
If you could, please hand in your statement.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the time.
State your name and address.
Suzanne Meska, R-
Suzanne Meska, Rye Gate Road. I'm, I'm really nervous. My son went through Riverfield School when it was overcrowded. He survived, but at least there were classrooms. I'm sitting here listening to the PTA presidents from the high school, and my son is an eighth grader, ready to launch off at Ludlow High School. We have to be serious here. There's no way an addition is going to be built in time for the eighth-grade class that is now going to enter Ludlow High School, where we have science on carts, not even art on carts. I ask the board to think of the creative ways to solve this in the short term, where I'm very excited that the kids in the future will have a new Riverfield. I can't afford with my child to wait to see what the new Ludlow is going to look at. It will be my first time walking through Ludlow since I graduated there in 1979. My fear is that I'm going to be walking back in time, and I am going to see the same school that I left in 1979 going to be the same school that will receive my son. We can't wait for additions. I'd love to say that you guys can develop this in the amount of time. I ask you to be creative. I know no one wants to look at the R-word. I know it's evil and nasty, but if, if it's between kids not being able to get into lab sciences because there's not enough room, and it's affecting the education of the children, we have to look in the short term at the best way to resolve this issue. You know, I, I wish we had the magic wand that we could ask for all this money to do this. I just don't know that we do, and I don't know that we have it in the timeframe for the first wave of inflow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No further comment, we're on to open board comment for two minutes. Now, there's, if there's, I don't see any open board comments, so I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, seconded by Mrs. Cannelli. All in favor, say aye. Aye, it's approved. Thank you very much.